Thank you all for being here. I am State Senator Shelley Mayer, Chair of the Senate Education Committee. I am here on behalf of the Senate Education Committee with Senator Lou, who will be here momentarily, on the Standing Committee on New York City Education, and the Standing Committee on Budget and Revenue, with many of my colleagues for this joint public hearing on how school districts are spending the significant sums we were able to get for foundation aid and ARP funds. I am going to acknowledge my colleagues, but I'm going to ask everyone to hold off on public statements until we hear the Commissioner, who rearranged her schedule to be here and has a hard stop at 10:30. When you leave, hopefully, your staff remains so we can continue to ask questions. But thank you for accommodating us, Commissioner. And I am joined, as I said, I will be joined by Senator Lou. I see Senator Jackson, Senator Mannion, Senator Reichlin Melnick, Senator Tedesco, Senator Oberrocker, Senator Breslin. Who else did I miss? Senator Speck. Did I miss anyone else? And this year, we had an extraordinary victory, really, in the budget and with the work of many stakeholders, including many in this room, in obtaining path-breaking amounts of old foundation aid, as well as obtaining American Rescue Plan funds to go directly to our schools. I will hold off on my general comments because I think the context of what we achieved is very significant and is meaningful to our schools, our students, and our families. But I am pleased to have, on our first panel, State Education Department Commissioner Betty Rosa. Dr. Rosa has been a very good partner to us in the legislature. She's joined by several of her colleagues. I'll let her introduce them. Normally, we have five minutes per witness, but, Commissioner, you have additional time. And we'd love to hear your statement. And then, Senator Lou, love to have you here. And then, we will start with questions after you do your opening statement.
I have a mask around function.
You want a new mask?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, you're getting one?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chair Mayor. Good morning, Chair Lou.
I'm sorry. Can you either get closer or make sure your mask is on?
Can you hear me? Is that better?
That's better for me.
Better? Better? Okay. I'm going to lean forward. Again, good morning, Chair Mayor.
Excuse me. Is it on, Commissioner?
Is that?
That's better.
That's better. Okay. I'm just going to lean into it. Again, good morning. This is the third. Good morning, Chair Mayor. Good morning, Chair Lou. And by the way, Chair Lou, I do believe in ghosts and members of the Senate here today. My name is Dr. Betty Rosa, Commissioner of Education, and I'm joined by Jason Harmon, our Assistant Commissioner for the Office of Accountability, Shawn Giambattista, Director of Education Finance, and Ed Leonard, Assistant Director of Financial Administration. And in spirit, we have Phyllis Morris, who would have loved to have been here, and she was scheduled for the fifth, our Chief Financial Officer, who has done amazing work behind the scenes. Thank you for inviting us and to speak on the additional state and federal resources that have been made available to districts. The 2021-22 enacted budget provided a 1.4 million foundation aid increase with a three-year phase-in schedule with a full phase-in by '23-'24 school year. The Board of Regents and the Department have long advocated for the foundation aid formula to be fully funded, and we deeply, deeply thank you, to you, to all, and particularly Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, Speaker Hasty, both Chair Mayor Lou Benedetto, for their advocacy on behalf of New York students and all the others that have worked so hard on this issue. The increase in foundation aid, coupled with the more than $14 billion in federal education COVID response funding New York has received, is instrumental in addressing the impact of learning loss and meeting students' social, emotional, and many of the trauma issues. Since March 2020, New York State has been awarded federal funding through the Corona Aid Relief and CARES Act, SERSA, and of course, the ARP Act. These federal funds support the ability of local educational agency LEAs to address the impact of COVID and the impact it has had on our state and many of our children. New York State has been allocated $9 billion in ARP Elementary Secondary School Emergency Relief, ERSER, funds. These funds are focused on strategies to support the safe return of in-person instruction and continuity of services, particularly around social, emotional, and trauma. ERSER funds may also be used to address the impact of lost instructional time by implementing evidence-based interventions. And we can go into many of these. But for now, I'm just going to get to the fact that we're hopeful that these funds are investments, not just spending. A minimum of 90%, 8.1 billion of New York State's ARP allocations required to be allocated, as you know, to local educational LEAs. LEAs must reserve at least 20% of their funding allocated to address the impact of lost instruction. The remaining funds may be used broadly to prevent, prepare, and respond to the pandemic. SED currently is administering the application for the LEA's 90% base ARP allocation in two parts. Part one, each LEA was asked to submit a signed assurance to SED by no later than May 24, 2021, after which LEAs were allowed to begin obligating funds. Part two, LEAs were asked to submit a full application and budget by September 30, 2021, with some districts having extensions upon request. ARP funds are available for LEA obligation for the March 13, 2020, to September 30, 2024 period. Of the remaining 10% of the funds, the 900 million state educational agency ARP requires a minimum of 5%, 49.8 million to be used to address the impact of lost instruction. A minimum of 1%, 90 million, to be used for evidence-based summer enrichment. A minimum of 1%, 90 million, to be used for evidence-based comprehensive after-school programs. The 2021 enacted New York State budget directed that these require set-as-size be allocated as grants to specified school districts. The U.S. Department, USD, required that all LEAs receiving ARP funds to develop two plans, which must be made publicly available on their LEA website, a plan for the safe return in person and a plan for LEA's use ARP funds. SED is considering each LEA's application and hopefully, how they are going to be spending these funds. SED has intentionally structured the LEA's application to capture all the required elements. SED has issued guidance to the LEAs on the development and submission of these plans, and we will review the plans as they are received to ensure that they comply with the intended use of the funds to support New York's children, as well as all the issues to recover from the pandemic. Our staffs are also currently providing technical assistance to LEAs, including directly to superintendents, school business officials on the use of the ARP ESR funds. And it is in the process of hiring, we are in the process of hiring additional staff dedicated to technical assistance. For these districts with state-appointed monitors, I do have to point out that we have placed conditions, given the situations and their history, in accordance with the intended purpose and provisions of the law. Require monitor review and approval of the initial application, both program plans and budget use of the funds. And we have constant meetings with them to ensure that this is being adhered to. Limiting the amount of funds made in advance once the applications are approved. And for that, today, we thank you for the opportunity, not only to testify, but to share with you some of our best thinking on these issues. And for that, I am extremely grateful to be here with you today. Thank you.
I was deferring any opening statements, really, until after the Commissioner's testimony because of her timeline. But because everyone does not know all the initials that you used, I think it's important for people to understand. SED is the New York State Education Department, which is, you are the Commissioner and report to a Board of Regents. It's not an executive agency. People need to understand that. Second of the initials you used was LEA. That's Local Education Agencies. That's basically everyone's school district, in large part. Those are the agencies that are going to get money under the ARP, which is the American Rescue Plan, which is a federal law that was enacted during COVID, which provided funding directly to schools under your approval. So just, am I right in my initial initials?
Yes. And we also made it, I think we provided not only a glossary of terms, but also, we do have a chart with the terms and also the expectations and meeting those expectations.
Okay. I'm going to jump in with some questions and then I'll defer to my colleagues as well. So in the Part One of the LEA application, which was due on May 24, 2021, did all districts apply for the funding in New York, all eligible districts? Do you know?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that part is good. Part Two, which is, the deadline is today, September 30, that is a more extensive description of how districts want to use the money. How many of those have you received? And have you determined eligibility for any of those? If you know.
So as of this morning--
Could you introduce yourself? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Jason Harmon, Assistant Commissioner, Office of Accountability at the New York State Education Department. As of this morning, Senator, we've received approximately 570 applications from LEAs. The review process for those has just started in earnest this week with the project staff that the Department has been able to onboard. So the review of those applications is ongoing at this point. But to your earlier point, yes, that Part Two is a more extensive application that will go forward through our review and approval process.
And I actually reviewed a copy of the application, which is quite detailed. As part of the American Rescue Plan, as well as with foundation aid, there is some opportunity for public input in the plan because this is $8.1 billion allocated to New York State schools, and that's a lot of money, and we want to make sure that people have a voice in it. Did districts, or have they begun to describe any plans for inclusion of input from the community, stakeholders, parents, and others? And have you given guidance on that issue?
Sure. So first and foremost, we've been having extensive conversations around this, I think even prior to developing our own plan, which we had to submit in July. And we also provided you with a one-page summary. The plan is about 263 pages that we had to submit. In the plan, we had to really reach out and have participants be very much a part of it and responses. In addition to that, we made sure that the local LEAs, local districts understood their process in terms of knowing that they had to reach out as they were developing their plans and taking into account not only just stakeholders, but their communities, the parents, and others in developing their plans. And we supported, with technical support, we absolutely did a great deal of work, not only with our stakeholders, you know, constantly, but also asking districts to model a similar approach.
And does the application require that the LEA describe their outreach to their community or their stakeholders as part of their application?
Well, in developing their plan, they really have to have not only the outreach, but obviously, they have to take into consideration communication and, you know, building relationships and pulling in information with their communities. And Jason, I think, has done some, and Phyllis, Jason, and the team, they've done extensive work in terms of technical support. Jason.
And I know Senator Jackson and maybe others have a question. When do you anticipate you'll make decisions on the awards? And obviously, if you need districts to modify their application, you're going to notify them so they can comply with your requirements. What is the timing and anticipated receipt of these funds?
So the applications will be reviewed on a rolling basis as they're received. So as we go through, we have a standard review protocol that we will go through each of their submitted plans with. And so if there's revisions that need to be made or additional information that's needed, they'll be sent back to the districts for that information. So as we're able to approve them, we will do that and then move towards payment, the initial payment on those applications, again, on a rolling basis as we complete those review processes.
Thank you. Senator, I know Senator Jackson, Senator Lou, do you have questions?
Yes.
So Senator Lou, and then Senator Jackson, and then others? Yes.
I'm happy to allow RJ go first.
Okay.
You want to go first, RJ?
You go. You're the chair.
No. Shelley Mayer is the chair. I'm happy to be, thank you, Madam Chair, for convening this hearing. And thank you, Commissioner, and all of your great team for joining us today. And we know that you changed your schedule to accommodate us. So thank you very much. I think our chairperson asked some very pointed questions about the federal aid that came through. As she mentioned, this year, in the budget, we were able to finally fulfill the state court-mandated ruling that requires the state of New York to fully fund a sound basic education for all school kids. We're phasing that completely in over the next three years, over this year and the next two years. And so while the state education is rightfully focused on the federal aid and having the LEAs apply for the federal aid, what kind of efforts has SED already or will undertake to monitor the proper and effective spending of the additional foundation aid that will be spread all throughout the state?
Sure. So, and part of the conversation will certainly allow Shawn to jump in. We realize that, as you know, Senator, that we've had some very challenging, financially challenged years in terms of providing the kind of quality education that we want for all of our students. While we realize that we've had an infusion of federal funding, we also realize that there is a cliff at the end of the federal dollars. So part of what we've been working on is really supporting districts and thinking about not only how to use those dollars in terms of investments, but also looking at the investments that have been made from the state foundation aid formula to really create the kind of educational quality that we want for our students using those funding. So the two funding streams, that's why I mentioned them in my opening remarks, are critical because while we have this infusion, and we're very grateful for that infusion as a result, unfortunately, of the pandemic and all the issues and trauma and social, emotional, and loss of learning, as the feds call it, we also know that our foundation aid formula and our dollars are the engine that's going to drive education in this state. So we clearly message, our narrative and our message is clear, that these dollars are dollars that are going to be very much a part of the foundation and the fabric of what moves forward beyond the 2024 when the federal dollars are used.
Shawn?
Sure. Thank you, Senator, for the question. As you know, the enacted budget required that each district put together, each district with a 10% increase in foundation aid or a $10 million increase, put together a plan in consultation with their local stakeholders. And that plan, the way the budget worked, that was specifically between the district and their constituents. And the districts have put together these plans, and they have to do it each of the next, this year and the next two years while foundation aid is being phased in if they cross that 10% or $10 million threshold. In addition, the state collects a large amount of financial reporting data. Three kind of large buckets for that. One is the State Funding Transparency Report, where districts report budgeted expenditures by school and by purpose. The next kind of component of that is the ST3. That's the financial document specified by the Office of the State Comptroller. The districts complete each year for both actual and projected expenditures. And the third piece is the federal Every Student Succeeds Act financial reporting piece, where districts report financial expenditure or expenditures by school and by purpose. And those reports and data for all three sets are put online. And so we'll be able to see where districts have chosen to program those funds through those financial reporting documents.
Okay. So the requirements, as part of our budget process, as you reiterated, the requirements for all the school districts of a substantial size, being that $10 million, 10% threshold being exceeded, those districts would have to provide evidence of how they engage their stakeholders, as well as additional-- well, what you're saying is that it's not additional financial reporting, but it's already within the systems that all these school districts are already required to report through.
That's correct.
So no school district can claim that there are additional, there's additional documentation or paperwork that will be required with this additional foundation aid?
It is really just that plan that they have to do annually if they cross that threshold.
Okay. And as the Commissioner pointed out, I keep going back and forth between her titles. As the Commissioner pointed out, the foundation aid coming from the state will be fully phased in by the time the federal funding ends, so that there is no fiscal cliff. I think that's an important point that everybody in the state needs to understand. And you included in your testimony, Commissioner, a letter from the United States DOE. And so this, I think this letter basically says that the New York State's plan to spend the federal assistance over the next couple of fiscal years is acceptable.
That's correct.
So we cleared that hurdle because originally, there was some issue of the way we were spreading that over the next couple of years.
I think that there was also an issue, and we met as a staff, there was an issue of also the, how the controlling of the funding and how those dollars would be directed or, you know, given direction to how the districts, the individual districts, LEAs would spend. And so we asked, we spoke with DOJ initially. I think initially, when the question came up, we had conversations with DOJ, and we clarified that, and we wanted it, we absolutely wanted it in writing so that you would be crystal clear--
And that's what this is.
--as to what the expectations.
Got it. And then my last question goes back to the documentation that's required. So no additional financial reporting is required. But our budget language that we passed along with the increase in foundation aid specifically requires, as you mentioned, that school districts demonstrate how they've engaged stakeholders in how the additional foundation aid would be spent. Now, I'll take an example. In New York City, the Department of Education proudly announced that they would just go to 100% of what they call fair student funding in New York City. They did so without engaging anybody. And in the course of these last several months, there's been a lot of parental feedback and discontent articulated about the deaf ears that many of these parents, particularly those who have been calling for a remote option. They've certainly been making their views known to the Department of Education in New York City, which, again, didn't seem to engage anybody, any of the stakeholders. So how would you, how would the State Education Department, or would the State Education Department kind of oversee or monitor how the local school districts are actually engaging the stakeholders in accordance with the law that we passed?
Well, first, we have, as I stated, in developing our own plan and creating, you know, the model, if you will, of how we were engaging our stakeholders in the conversation to develop our plan, we had conversations with the Big Five. We had conversations with various other stakeholders, and we absolutely encouraged our districts to engage in these conversations in order to ensure that as they developed the plan, that the plan reflected the engagement that they needed to reflect in order to make sure that the voices of all communities were part of their planning process. In terms of looking at, and again, we had many, many conversations. And I think one of the things that was critical for us was to make sure that we shared with them what the expectations were.
Shawn?
That's correct. We did remind districts to send out notifications, as well as engaged indirectly to ensure that they understood the requirements as they were passed in the budget. The budget language did not provide a role for the Department for corrective action or collection of these plans. And so it was really placed between the district and the community. And we just want, we made sure that these districts understood their obligations under the statute to engage with their communities.
Okay. I think that we will probably, in cases where there may be complaints of a lack of engagement, we would probably seek your advice, as well as assistance, in rectifying those kinds of situations. Thank you so much for your efforts in these difficult times. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lou. Senator Jackson, before we lose you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair Mayor. So in response to a question, you said there was 570 applications were approved. Is that correct? 570 out of, what's the maximum, LEAs?
Sure. So the, let me clarify. The 570 applications, Part Two applications, have been received? At this point, those are actively under review. I'm not aware that any have yet been approved.
Okay.
The total, I believe we have 1,004 LEAs--
1,004.
Correct. That will be, that have an allocation for which they can apply.
Okay. And the deadline was when? September 30th? Is that correct?
So the deadline was initially set for the end of August based on a pretty substantial amount of extension requests that we were receiving from LEAs around the state.
Okay.
The Department adjusted that submission deadline to today, and that we are continuing to provide extensions to districts who reach out and make those requests. But the deadline, as of right now, unless there's an extension, is today.
Okay. And I'm just curious, at what point in time do the local LEAs have to get their act together in order to meet deadlines so that there's accountability? That's what I'm concerned about.
Well, the, there are two parts to this. First of all, we've also been, throughout this whole process, even the challenge of submitting our own proposal was really a tight, tight process. Without any additional staff, we pulled our own staff to really develop the plan itself. As most of you know, we, you know, we have a very limited staff that does, given the fact that even with our ask in terms of the funding, we were, we had asked for a certain amount, and of course, it was way, way below that. Given that, we went to work in terms of our own plan. I think we submitted on June 7. We had revisions on June 13. And finally, a plan was approved, of which originally, we did get the $5.9 billion, which was the original amount, and then subsequent to that, the $3 billion. The process of looking at the timeline, the constrained timelines, the districts having, as most of us know, going through the summer school, preparing for, as most of you know, with all kinds of issues, returning students in person, looking at shortage of staff, transportation-- I mean, extensive, extensive issues. And that's why we gave you the overview because the timeline has been so strict and so tight from the feds. We are in continuous conversation with the feds that this timeline has been so constraining, and yet, of course, we're very appreciative of the funding. So our-- So our, our ability to take the deadline that was August to push it out is is an acknowledgement that districts are struggling with many complex, comprehensive issues. So as good partners and good neighbors, we're trying to, well, we're looking at compliance, we're also looking at support to get them, to make sure that when they do the plans, that they get the feedback and that they submit a plan that really is comprehensive and is reflective of the needs of their community.
Sure. Commissioner, and I understand that especially, and I know that the state education department and in previous hearings complained about the fact that they don't have enough resources in order to have the staff in order to to move the system as far as monitoring 1,007, 1,004 LEAs. But under the federal guidelines, it must be the the application process and must be consulted with parents and what have you and so forth. Is that correct? And as a result of that, people are saying, well, when are we going to see the final project, final project that's approved? Do they have access to the working document that they submitted to the state education department as far as the 570 of them?
No, what they, what we did, and again, there was a lot of confusion in the field. And so that's why we did the overview, which we shared with you in terms of time, timetables. Even meeting with many advocates, we submitted the overview so that people knew exactly what was due and when it was due. And the reason for that was because there was a cert, there was a lot of confusion, you know, sometimes when you talk about plans, a plan that's due for for state aid, foundation aid, a plan that's due for the feds. And even with the feds, the two plans, we were looking to even consolidate those two plans so that it wouldn't become so challenging for school districts. But we also understand that the draft form of a plan, what we tend to do is, because we're giving feedback, what we wanted to do is make sure that ultimately the districts get the kind of feedback so that the plan that eventually gets shared is is the final plan but not a planning process.
Sure. Another question is, did New York City submit of the 570? And I ask that question because obviously I'm from New York City, but I chair the city's committee and I want to know whether or not they're submitted there by the deadline. And if they haven't, I'm going to be communicating with them. They need to know whether or not, you know, they're in compliance. Do we know? Since New York City is the largest.
Right. Okay. So Jason just reminded me, we did, we did run into one major issue, which is on our side.
Okay.
And I will share with you, and it's, it's, our cafe is obviously, which is something we asked to upgrade because obviously our own system is antiquated.
Ah.
And so when you get to billions, which is what we have to, you know, I think it was like a week and a half ago, Phyllis called me up and said, we've got a little bit of a problem in terms of New York City because the system, right, really doesn't, has challenges with billions. So we are working it through, the programmers are working to adjust it so that we wouldn't be making like, you know, two payments or whatever.
Sure.
So on that side, we own that part of it.
Well, I say to you that if your system is antiquated, we must, the legislature must provide the resources that you get updated equipment. So that was a clear message to us that we have to make sure that you have the equipment to do your job and the personnel to carry out the job. I know that your, your time is short, but where do you stand on as far as remote options for families? And do you think that would be the best method to run such a program statewide if you can?
Sure. Our position was very clear made and I know that all of you know that when we had a little bit of an absence of the guidance in terms of opening schools, which we were all anticipating we were going to receive, we wrote, you know, I wrote a memo on July 30th and in that memo, I described, I described the remote as a modality. We've never taken it off the table. The truth of the matter is that the reason we didn't is because we knew that some districts would have to pivot in different types of situations. I did have conversations with New York City, both at the mayor's level as well as the DOE level, to ensure that they reconsider and that they consider particular communities that were impacted and had issues with the remote. And while we stand on the fact that in-person learning is the most critical strategy in terms of teaching and learning, we also never took off remote as an option. We did, we were very clear to to inform the districts that this was a local decision. And at the same time, we encourage districts to really consider the issues that were very, very specific to their communities, especially poor communities, communities of color that had issues with learning laws, but at the same time also had issues with families, with extended families or families with underlying conditions. We even suggested that they try transitioning and encouraging and publicizing and informing so that parents would begin to feel very comfortable knowing that they really could make informed decisions based on science and the facts. Our approach was never to take the strategy off the table and it still stands. We do believe that remote as a modality, as a strategy, even in expand, extended, expanded, you know that I did computers in my own, in my own school that, where you were a school board member, the community school, we did extended time, we used technology as a way of in enhancing the teaching and learning process. So our department is very, very committed to the use of remote as, as a partner, as a way of developing and enhancing the learning. And in some cases, we know that we have children that really have all kinds of fragile medical issues and we also supported that those children would be considered.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I have other questions, but I know that I have to wait in second round.
Thank you.
So thank you.
If we get to the second round with the Commissioner, but Senator De Disco, ranking member of the Education Committee.
Thank you very much, Chairwoman Mayor, and thank you for your leadership on this committee and all my colleagues on the committee and those who are here today. Appreciate having the opportunity to listen and get feedback on the implementation and the utilization of the funding for our schools. And thank you, Commissioner, for your service and your support group for being here today to help answer these questions and give us some input. You probably know that my first job I ever had before I became a public servant, sometimes I say tongue in cheek, real job, was as an educator. Got my master's degree just down the road from the College of St. Rhodes with some of my colleagues who were also educators. So we've been in the classroom before. And like my dad always said to me, you know, a good part of any success you're going to have, son, is just showing up sometimes. And teaching special education, that was a challenge for some of my students in terms of transportation, getting to school. My district now is close to 4,000 square miles.
Wow.
It's the size of Rhode Island and Delaware combined. It's urban, rural, suburban. My first question is, do you have a helicopter I can borrow? Just kidding. But I was telling my colleagues, it took two and a half hours to get up to the great little town of Inlet the other day and I had a good chat with 15 people and it was two hours, half hours back. It was very fruitful. My question is, what kind of impact are you getting or continue to get from our schools in relationship to transportation needs and the utilization of funding? The concerns I'm hearing are spacing on our buses because it seems to me that some of the contagion taking place has been taking place because in buses, they're kind of packed in together and I think schools are becoming cognizant of that and trying to do something about that. But that leads to more costs for transportation when less students can be on buses potentially because of the spacing. And I think the state, maybe the second floor has been doing something about bus drivers because there's a lack of those. Is there anything you think we can do further to mitigate some of those concerns or help our school districts in relationship to that? And is funding that we've gotten now being able to be utilized for these types of things?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the last part.
Is funding that they've gotten now, the school districts, able to be utilized to mitigate some of these concerns that we're talking about?
Yeah. First, so let me go back before we get to the funding. One of the things that we, early on, even last year when we did our guidance, we absolutely worked with the governor's office to look at transportation and some of the ways that, whether it was siblings or, you know, the way that we could utilize the transportation issue and maximize it and at the same time, keep our kids healthy and safe during the process. We, so in the process of looking at transportation, you know, we talk about a cliff, we kind of saw a little bit of a cliff with, with people who had been part of this, this transportation, who were delivering food, as you know, delivering packets. So that standby issue really hurt many districts. I mean, we really have to be, we have to call it out and we have to be honest about that whole issue that we, when we were, you know, we, as a regions and a board, we were advocating to make that payment. And eventually that did happen, but in the process, we really, you know, we really created some challenging issues because it's very hard for companies to have people standing, you know, say, we'll go home for whatever and then come back when we need you. So, so that in some ways hurt us. I think that people were receiving checks, you know, without necessarily having to work for, as you know, without, in some cases, without, you know, minimal wages and so forth and so on. So all these issues were really already challenging, to say the least, in terms beyond, beyond, Senator, the issue of the capacity or the utilization of the transportation itself. I have to acknowledge the fact that our team on transportation has been, you know, and it's the same team that does facilities, has been amazing in coming up with solutions every single day. We, you know, we're just dealing with one out on Long Island. We were on, on the phone last night, 10 o'clock at night, just finding ways of how to support the districts that are all of a sudden facing this issue. And as you know, Rochester did too and others, East Rammer Park and go on and on. The, the issue is not just the capacity and the, well, that is one major issue, or the funding and incentives. There are districts that do have incentives, but you also have particular communities that do not have. So it becomes an equity issue, as you know, as a result of that. So what we're trying to do is work, obviously, with the governor's office to find solutions that really cut across all communities, rural, urban, suburban, and communities that you and I know sometimes are the ones that are mostly impacted as a result of those that can't afford to use other means of transporting their children as well. So for us, the transportation issue is, is critical as we speak and we are not only using, looking at the funding, but also looking at ways that we can support collectively all the districts with the shortage of, obviously, drivers, but also looking at, you know, we went to the three feet, we went to the issue of, you know, opening windows and doing all kinds of different ways of transporting our children. But eventually we do have to think of a way that's much more sustainable and, and create a structure of transportation that really allows, allows us to not have every year or when these things happen, become a crisis.
Senator, if you could have a focus on the potential of the commissioner's back, would you let us know when we have, literally have, believe it is now?
Sure.
And we will.
Sure.
Let your say.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Commissioner.
Okay.
Questions? Senator Mayne?
Thank you, Commissioner. As someone who taught in public schools for 28 years and was the head of a teacher association for eight, I really appreciate your service and, you know, you have been a bright light in a time which has been challenging for a lot of teachers and I do appreciate that. I have a bunch of questions, but I'm going to stick to one, back to Senator Jackson's question, which is with the, with the number currently sitting at 570 out of the number of LEAs that could submit, are there scenarios where a district would not receive the federal dollars or SED would deny base, parts of it or all of the application based on them not being in compliance or following the requirements of the application?
Well, and again, I'm going to turn it to my colleagues here. And I call them colleagues because for me, staff sounds kind of strange. These are brilliant minds and part of the think tank, as I call them. We have been doing some, looking at our funding and one of the things, when we talk about equity, right, we have to think about equity across the board. And we, you know, we have even had small school districts, Senator, to your point, that we've had school districts that would not receive funding, right? And we've been able to kind of pull together and say, okay, you know what, we can do this, we can pull these dollars and at least make sure that everybody gets. And for some small school districts, these amounts are really essential, critical and valuable. So keeping in mind that, that what we want to try to do is create a sense of equity across the board and use our, wherever it's allowable. We even did it with, when we got the homeless funding to ensure that, for example, we had a district out on Long Island that, that took in a lot of kids and never got any support for it. In planning this, we reallocated, right, and we set aside funding, knowing that they probably will have these children come in. So our, our process, when it comes to our districts, is to really look at and personalize the needs of our districts and personalize it in a way that we talk about how we can look at the funding and use the funding to, to support all the various districts, to your question. So I'm going to let both of them talk specifically about some of the things we've done in that, in that arena. Sean, do you want to start?
I think Jason's probably the best.
So technically at the federal level, there is a timeline. The department has one year from the date when we received those ARP dollars to obligate them to issue grant award notices, which Ed's office does after the, the programmatic review and approval process is completed. So there is that timeline in play here for the ARP dollars that, that pushes out into March of 2022, when we would need to have an application fully approved, the grant award notice issued and the, and the payment, at least an initial payment made. So that deadline is out there. That's been a message that we've communicated to superintendents, to business officials, to program staff in much of our technical assistance. From the department side, and I think the Commissioner's been very clear, our mandate in the program office has been to work as extensively as is needed with districts to get them to an approved version of their plan and their use of funds. And so that has taken, you know, in some cases, that's a very straight and easy path and in some cases, that is a little bit more complicated. But from the department side of things, we are looking to have every dollar obligated out to districts based on the funding formula that they're, and the dollars that they're entitled to.
Just to add to Jason, the specific deadline is March 23rd, 2022, for all of the American Rescue Plan dollars.
Gotcha.
And just as a quick follow-up then, back to the capacity question. State Ed has the capacity. It's clear you're going to work with people, but we have heard, you know, the stories that over time, you know, your ranks have been depleted, you've taken on a multitude of different issues, including the distribution of these funds and, you know, challenges related to the pandemic and in multitude of different ways. But we can help these districts make sure, and the state ed, it sounds like, is committed to make sure that they have an application that fits all the requirements and, and will work with them until that happens and will seek out those that for every reason the challenge might be in not submitting it, we'll get that done. Okay, thank you.
Senator Cole, Senator Rasmussen, anyone else in this first row? Oh, yes. Senator Ryan, the moment, and then we'll go to the staff.
Thank you very much. I missed this.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here and I just want to personally thank.
Thank you so much for being here, and I just want to personally thank you on behalf of the students in my district, in the East Ramapo School District. You were instrumental in helping push for and support that legislation, which gave the state monitors there the power to actually ensure that the public school students were getting an excellent education. So thank you so much for that. With regards, with regards to this issue here, I, I'm curious, so we have 570 applications that have been received, and you said you're going to be evaluating them on a rolling basis as they were received. When do you anticipate, for districts that got them in on an early, you know, relatively early, when do you anticipate approvals might actually start coming for some of those early submitters?
So a lot of that approval timeline will depend on sort of the content of their application, the completeness of that, the degree to which there's evidence, to the Chair's point earlier, that there's been engagement with stakeholders from within their community. So that process could be very quick. In some cases, like I said, it will depend on the number of times and the amount of additional information. But again, part of that, that timeline will be dependent on the content of the application itself.
So without trying to pin you down specifically, if a district met the August deadline and submitted, and there were no major issues with their application, they might start seeing funds within the next few months approved?
That, that would certainly be our goal. To the, to the earlier question, the department is, has just now been able to hire an onboard project staff to support review and approval, monitoring, technical assistance related to those ARP dollars. Up until this point, all of the CARES Act, all of the CERSA Act applications, all of that was reviewed by existing program staff. And so we're hoping that the timelines for review and approval on these ARP dollars will be able to move more expeditiously with those project staff on boarded.
And so we're very grateful for lifting that freeze. Very grateful.
And I'm glad to hear that, because that was going to be my question, is just ensuring that you feel that you have the staff capacity to review what's going to be 1,000 applications. Many of them, I'm sure, will have multiple rounds, and you feel comfortable with the staffing that you have to do that now?
Well, we're still in the process of going through the hiring process, because, as most of you know, the whole entire process, even though we're an independent agency, we're still dependent on DOB. And so the entire process is cumbersome, to say the least, to be quite honest. And so while they have been working, and I do have to say, in the last, I would say in the last, last month, we have really been getting the kind of response and the kind of support that has been really helpful, to say the least. I also want to say that particularly in districts that have monitors, we are very, as a matter of fact, before coming over, we, the two of us were having a conversation with one particular district. We are very vigilant, we are very intentional in how, what their plan looks like and how those dollars are going to be spent, because, again, we want to make sure that these are investments, that this is not just spending. And so we meet with the superintendent, the monitor, the teams, that's the meeting we were having earlier, and these meetings are quarterly meetings, but ongoing every week, just about, making sure that the investments are what they need to be, especially with some districts that have brand new superintendents, and need the kind of support in fully understanding the way that we, as a, as a department in a service-oriented way, can provide them with technical support.
I'm glad to hear that, because I know I have parents and community members just wanting to ensure there's going to be more than a cursory review of what the districts are doing with the money, and it sounds like it'll be a very substantive review of that. So I appreciate it.
Senator Jackson, can you stay? Commissioner, if you'd please, when you tell?
I have about two minutes, but.
Two minutes, okay.
Yes. And then I just want to summarize, is that it? If that's okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to be pretty quick. So understanding that in New York City, that over 1,000 classrooms have been closed either totally or partially, and an entire school, because the staff had COVID-19, and that was in a, a school in which the children with special needs were type school. But will LEAs be penalized if they have a dip in in-person enrollment due to some students and parents keeping them out of school for fear of, you know, because there's been pictures on the internet where students are all in a hallway, and it's so crowded, and in the cafeterias. And the fact is that the percentage of COVID-19 is increasing in our schools. You know, initially, Mayor de Blasio was only going to do every two weeks, and now it's every week. And so the trend is going up and not going down. And so for fear that parents are keeping their kids at home, and those that feel that New York City Department of Education should have had a opt-out option, and they didn't. And obviously, that's the mayor, in my opinion, and no one else. So the question is, I don't want New York City to be penalized because 100,000 students are not in school that should be getting an education, one way or the other.
Well, in terms of being penalized, we are expecting, obviously, the, it's not just the plan. We're also, you know, many of my conversations with the chancellor, as well as the mayor's office, centers around being responsive to these issues. As a matter of fact, I just rearranged my schedule for Monday because there was a, there was an incident in the Bronx in one of the high schools that was quite, quite disturbing, to say the least. And so I, I will be going there on Monday at 9:30 to really take, take a close look, because some of the issues are socially-emotional, some of the issues are traumas, but some of the issues are the configurations, so the way that the, the existing spaces, and obviously, you know, bringing children back during this period of time and giving them an opportunity to transition from, some of them who have not been in school for over a year, a year and a half, is very challenging to reconnect and revisit some of the issues of personal spa, even issues of personal spacing. So what, what we hope to do is not, you know, we're not looking at the issue of punishing, we're looking at the issue of finding solutions for some of the issues that they have. But we're also, as the team knows, in some cases, we're also going to be a little bit much more than just making suggestions, and also holding them accountable for, for their plan, but also for the kinds of things that should be in their plan and are expected, and also for the communities that, obviously, we don't want parents to be, to be held in, having to be reported for not sending their kids because, right? So we are also having internal, just so everybody knows, we're in communications with other commissioners, you know, the commissioners, everything from the commissioner who deals with these issues in terms of, of children services, and even children that are trans, that are trans, you know, are going to be transitioning from incarcerated places. So we're trying to come up with, commissioners are working together to really come up with a plan of how we create a sense of coherence around all students being part of the, the, what I call the landscape of educating them, no matter where they are and what their circumstances are. So for us, it's internally working with commissioners. I think we have a, in our, November, we have a, a fireside chat or a forum where we are going to be really helping to discuss this. But we also want to protect and make sure that parents have the information, but at the same time, really address those issues so that parents are not penalized as well for some of the decisions that I think they're currently making.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your response, and these are appropriate questions I will be asking on Tuesday, when the Department of Education comes in front of us also.
Thank you. Before you close, and Senator Tedesco wants to thank you before you say something in closing.
Sure.
Commissioner, I would be remiss if, on behalf of two towns in my beautiful 49th Senatorial District, the school districts of Indian Lake and Long Lake in the Adirondacks, want me to thank you, and I want to personally thank you. These are two towns which have school districts, were a part of hundreds of school districts, who didn't fit a formula because of one small niche. We contacted you, the Congresswoman, myself, and Assemblyman Smullen, and said, this is unfair, a lot of their kids have to get the free lunch and fit it. You came up with the funding. So when you talk about equity, I can attest to the fact that you don't just talk the talk, you're walking the walk, and I appreciate everything you did to get that funding to them. It, it meant the world to them in a whole bunch of ways. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
As someone who has been to the North Country and with Beverly Oderkirk, I really know, like you said, that sometimes they're also the forgotten group in many, in many of these situations. I just want to thank all of you personally, because I think we have all collectively faced many, many challenges. But I also know that, Senator, you have been there, and along with the Speaker, the Majority Leader, Senator Lou, I know we're still looking at your curriculum issue, and all of you, particularly around the two major pillars that we've been looking at, which is obviously our DEI work and our pillar of customer service. And so for today, I just want to say that we are very committed, as a team, to provide, to be the kind of department institution that is here to serve, to serve, to serve, and to serve our communities, to serve our children, and to really focus on what really truly matters, which is you don't get to an economic development as a state without making sure that our children have the kind of opportunities, education, and education defined in a much broader sense, in a superhighway sense, because there are children whose interest is in the arts, there are children whose interest is in terms of CTE, there are children whose interest is broader than sometimes how we narrow the scope of teaching children. So our department is very, very, very committed to really creating, meeting our children where they, where they are, and hopefully helping them create their portfolio of their future based on what we provide for them. And for that, thank you for the partnership, and I really, truly thank you for your work that supports our work. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much. And I know for myself and my district, where we've been in daily contact with a, a challenge in our district, your department has been exemplary and committed to the kids, and that's our job. So thank you for that. I know you have to leave, so I do, I know others have questions. I have some technical questions, if I could go ahead with your staff. I don't think you need to be here for that, Commissioner. But thank you again.
So we're going to leave, we're going to leave the team here, if you have additional questions? Thank you so much.
Yes. So one question is, currently, the applications that have been filed are not publicly available. Do you intend to make the applications publicly available at some point? And if not, could I recommend that, I think for all of us, I'm thinking of Senator Jackson and others of us, we want to see what districts say they're going to do with this money that we fought so hard to get to them.
So within the ARP application, Senator, there's, there's two places where we've asked LEAs to identify, to provide us with the links of where their plans will ultimately be posted, both for their use of funds plan, as well as their safe return to in-person learning plans. Both of those are required elements in the ARP application. I believe that the intent of the department is to, as those are, as applications are approved, that we will begin sharing out on our site those web links, so that there is access both from our end, as well as for LEAs to be posting on their own websites at those addresses, so that local stakeholders can, can access those materials, the plans, the budgets, that full package of materials would be posted, sort of in both places, for users to be able to access.
Okay, thank you. Also, in, in our enacted budget, because of our fear about this so-called potential cliff or the end of federal funding, we added language that local education agencies shall identify any programs utilizing such funding that are expected to continue beyond the availability of such federal funds, and identify local funds that will be used to maintain such programs in order to minimize disruption to core academic and other school programs. In your application form, do you ask districts for that specific information on what funding sources they may need to use in order to continue very legitimate programs that they are now able to fund?
I don't know if we ask specifically of, for them to identify specific funding sources. I do believe that there's requests in there around sustainability of what the plans are as they go forward. I would have to double-check the application specifically to see if we ask for those, you know, specific sources. But that conversation around sustainability has been part of the technical assistance, and I believe is captured in the application as well.
Okay, let me ask another, sort of in-the-weeds question. So your district gets this funding, ARP, you ultimately say their application is okay. They want to use it for a capital project, let's say, rebuilding their gym, or fixing their roof, or putting on solar, and a number of things that are expressly authorized under the federal bill. So they want to take that federal money and pair it with traditional capital reimbursement that, under state law, they get reimbursed at a certain percentage. Have you facilitated a path forward for projects that use a, a mix of funding sources, including ARP, particularly using capital reimbursement funds? And how can districts proceed down that route, given sort of the way this is structured?
I can speak a little bit to this. So as part of the application, districts, if they're engaging in a capital project, it turns on a different section, set of the application. And that is shared with the Office of Facilities Planning, so that there's no lag in terms of notifying them that a capital project is coming. In, in terms of the reimbursement, we are working with our Facilities Planning Office to ensure that districts can blend and braid different funding sources as needed. The state funds for building aid are reimbursement, not upfront, and so districts do need to outlay funds initially before that, that reimbursement kind of kicks in.
Yes, so just to be specific, if they're building a new gym, the, the traditional capital reimbursement, they have to outlay first, the ARP money theoretically, they could get first and begin the project prior to expending any funds. Is that correct?
They, they will get, they, they can use, they can blend and braid their funding sources between bond revenues, ban revenues, or other proceeds, local state funds, to, to get those construction projects done.
Okay. And just because this has been a long-term issue, once you approve a district receiving, an LEA receiving ARP funds, are we still subject to DOB signing off on the check going to the school district? Or can you authorize?
That is currently not a restriction that we're facing.
You're not acting under that restriction?
Not, not for these federal dollars, no.
Well, that was something that we fought hard for with Senator Schumer's leadership, to ensure that we did not have derailment of funds. And I'm hopeful that with Governor Hochul's leadership, those issues going forward will not be obstacles to getting money out the door. But with respect to this money, I'm very pleased that, once you approve, districts know they will get the money, and they don't have to engage in politics or any other things. It's on the merits, they will be approved, and they will get the money, and they should spend it as you have approved their use. So thank you. Senator Oberochra, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. There we go. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all again for your, I'll use the word "superhuman" efforts here, in light of where we are and have been. I represent the 51st Senate District, and to kind of piggyback on Senator Tedesco's request for a helicopter, my, my district is approximately the size of the state of Connecticut. So if there is any opportunity to piggyback on that, I would love to be able to do so. And I, I'm sure you can imagine, having a very rural district, there are certain other challenges that beset the 48 school districts that are in, in my district. that are in my district. Remote learning is one of them due to the issues, again, with broadband and the ability, you know, for connectivity and things of that nature. This is more just an open thought, if you will, or, you know, I'll use the word maybe to plant a seed. Is there or could there be any type of funding that would qualify for some of our local districts to look at expanding that, to improving upon that? I know there's some challenges there as well. But, you know, when we talk about truly remote learning, and it was a huge issue, I can remember being on a couple of calls with some of my local Zoom calls, Zoom meetings, and some of the students couldn't have their video on because of that. So it's just something that I didn't, you know, I really don't know. I haven't heard anything. I don't know if there would be anything that would qualify for that type of funding. But it would be for our districts, our rural districts, extremely, extremely helpful to put something like that potentially forward. My second one is, again, more of a personal concern. The district that I live in, the Schenebys School District, is in the process. They just had a straw vote to have an annexation to the Worcester School District five miles up the road. And my concern is, anytime I think we change things, I didn't want anything to get lost in the mix as far as funding goes for the two, which will be, you know, combining into one. Do you foresee any issues? Do you foresee any potential issues with the funding source? Because we are looking at two school districts. That vote will be coming up in December, the final vote for the annexation. And if that goes through, does the new school district have to reapply? Does the two school districts that have applied and either have been approved, does that just, you know, seamlessly, you know, transverse over to the best of your knowledge?
I'm not sure. Yeah, I think that's a question that we can investigate and certainly get back to you with.
You always got to have someone that has that type of a question, right? So I had to be the one today. But I would appreciate that because it is, you know, a very big concern of mine, of course, and I'm sure the folks that are in the two towns would really. And that was it. I just wanted to really get that out there and see if you could get back to me on it. That would be most excellent. Again, I thank you, Madam Chair and Committee, for allowing me to talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Lou?
Thank you. We all know that learning loss has been a big issue during this COVID crisis. And learning loss really has been across the board. But it is more pronounced with students, for students with special needs. And now, this summary that your department has provided, just the highlights of the American Rescue Plan funding, it's very helpful. It doesn't say anything, though, about resources directly directed to students with special needs. Are there specific parts of the ARP funding that is directed to recovering the learning loss or bolstering the instruction for students with special needs?
So for each LEA out of their allocation of those ARP funds, they are required to reserve at least 20% of those dollars to address a range of needs that they may identify related to lost instructional time. The application that the department put forward does ask them specifically about addressing those needs for vulnerable populations, students with disabilities, our English language learners, students who are experiencing homelessness, migrant students. So that is a specific area of interest that they'll, that their plan will speak to. In addition to that, the, out of the state-level reserve for funding, the enacted budget directs that 5% reserve, I think Commissioner spoke to this earlier, approximately $450 million to, I believe it's 398 LEAs that would provide additional dollars to focus on the needs related to lost instructional time. So again, each individual district will have that requirement. The specific types of interventions, the specific focus of on student needs will be at their local level. But each district, each LEA will require.
So the federal funding addresses vulnerable populations, but it doesn't specifically require anything for students with special needs?
It doesn't. The federal requirement directs.
That's up to the school district to determine.
Correct. The specific amount or type of investment is at local discretion.
But that, the additional funding directed to students with special needs would be part of the applications submitted by those local school districts. They would spell out how much of their additional resources, like you said, 20% towards vulnerable populations, including students with special needs?
So that 20% requirement is across an entire LEA with an emphasis on addressing the needs of vulnerable populations. So it would be included as a subset of that, but not with a specific mandate for an amount or related to a particular population?
And the $390 million that you referred to with regard to state funding, that also does not specifically require any amounts directed towards students with special needs?
Correct. It would be the same, just focused on addressing learning loss as determined at the LEA level.
If I could just add something to my colleague Jason, there was a separate.
Can you get closer to your mic, please?
There was a separate ARP IDA, additional funding that goes to the LEAs. That's based on their typical allocation. I don't have the exact dollar amount that New York received for ARP IDA, but we can most definitely provide.
What does IDA stand for again?
That's Individuals with Disabilities, Students with Disabilities.
Individual?
Individuals with, Students with Disabilities.
Okay.
And it goes specifically towards the question that you're raising in regards to students.
Okay, so there is a small amount.
Yes, there's an additional amount that was passed through a separate.
I know that our body, Madam Chair, pays close attention to students with special needs. And I think perhaps going forward, we probably need to get some more specific language directing that funding and the resources towards families with students with special needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Lou. I think Senator, Senator Mannion, you had another question?
Thank you. Just while I have you here, there was a lot of discussion about capacity and some discussion about the formula. As you can imagine, I have neighboring districts, and one district has $10,000 more per pupil to work with and over the course of a long period of time, that's definitely creating a great deal of disparity in what those districts can do. So with that understanding that the legislature has a role to play, and these have been a very challenging 18 months, is there any work being done at SED? Or what would you recommend from our side as far as planning towards, you know, making or considering a significant change to the funding formula that seems to miss some of our, some of our needier districts and creates a bit of a, I guess, not a Hunger Games scenario, but a Hunger Games scenario that is embedded in failure for some districts? So is there any being worked done at SED in that area? Is there any timeline or any, anything that you would recommend to legislators as to what we can do to make an adjustment there?
Thank you for the question, Senator. Two years ago, in the Regents' State Aid Proposal and Request for the 1920 school year, the Regents included a request for additional funds for a team to review the Foundation Aid formula and really do a deep dive and a study on the weights that are used, the formula elements, and what kinds of districts and populations are being missed and underserved. That was not included in the state budget, and so that work is pending, the funding for it. The department doesn't currently have the capacity to do this kind of wholesale review, but it is an important priority, and it's one that the Regents have been at the forefront of advocating for.
Thank you for that answer. And this is my last one, I promise, which is related to the issue that is, certainly I saw dramatic changes over the past few years, and I just left a classroom in December, which is staff shortages specifically to teachers. But it really goes across the board in teaching assistants, school nurses, school psychologists, et cetera. And I was proud to represent most of that group. Is it really up to the LEAs as far as teacher recruitment as it relates to these federal dollars to be able to utilize those as best they see fit? Were any of those federal dollars set aside to address the issue of, you know, what we, what we are seeing in school districts, which is the inability to have substitute teachers to fill in or take over classrooms? You have teachers who are instructional specialists or work in other capacities where they have to cover classrooms. Classrooms are being combined when there are absences. And of course, all of this has been exacerbated by the pandemic. So going back to my question, with the federal dollars, is any of it there to address the pipeline, which we know has decreased over the past decade or so, into the classroom?
So the ARP dollars would allow those sort of recruitment-retention approaches for LEAs to engage in? The decision-making around that, as you noted, would be at the local level?
Okay.
But that as an allowable use and an appropriate use of funds, that would be covered under those ARP dollars?
Thank you.
Senator Jackson, another question?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I thank you for coming today. And I was looking at our briefing document, and I just have some questions. I'm looking at, for example, the details, the possibility of Syracuse. And they list specific percentages in order to use the monies of Foundation Aid and the American Rescue Plan money. But I don't see specific details as far as staff is concerned. I know, for example, over the past year or two years, Rochester has laid off so many employees as a result of the fact that their financial situation. But now Rochester gets $39.8 million in Foundation Aid and almost $197 million in ARP funding. And so are we encouraging people, especially when you talk about that you're going to basically deal with students that have been out of the classroom for 18 months and try to bring them up to speed? Are we emphasizing hiring teachers back and staff back to help them as far as either social workers and other people like that? I'm just asking a question as far as, and reviewing the plans that you have to approve.
I think, Senator, to your, to your point, the question in terms of the investment of the federal dollar side of things, a lot of, a lot of districts have asked about that, using the dollars to hire or rehire staff. Most of our conversations around that issue have focused on that issue of sustainability, of how are you going to bring resources in now that when those federal dollars go away, can be sustained going forward? So that has been a regular conversation, whether it's classroom teachers, whether it's social workers, really across the range of supports that districts are considering. And in the cases of using those federal dollars, how can they do that in a way that will allow them to maintain that once that funding goes away? And that goes to the concept that Sean raised earlier, this idea of braiding and blending funding to be able to create a sustainable system of supports for students. That is a regular topic of technical assistance right now with districts.
Now, I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, did I hear either you or others in representing the State Education Department, the Commissioner, that once plans are approved, they have one year from that point in time of approval to utilize the funds? Is that correct?
No. So let me clarify, Senator. So that we at the department have a one-year timeline to make the initial awards. And so that was the March 23rd, 2022 timeline that Ed referenced earlier. We must make awards within that timeline. Once the LEAs receive their dollars, they have until September 30th of 2024 to obligate those dollars. And so at any point, there's not, they don't have to use a certain amount in the first year versus the second year. They have that entire period of time to use those allocated funds.
And I appreciate you redefining the timeframes overall as far as State Ed and the LEAs as far as utilizing funds. But even if, for example, if they cannot prove or say that ideally they sure hope that the state of New York will provide more funding so all of our kids will have guaranteed for sound basic education according to their, what they're entitled to under New York State Constitution. But even if they can't prove it, and if in fact you're going to have a teacher there until '23, '24, I'd rather have them there for that period of time than not have them at all. Because our kids have lost so much in 18 months that we must give them every opportunity to catch up and to do well in school. So I just make that point. I'm going to make it next week when I'm in New York City because that's very, very important. Also, I just wanted to know whether or not, is the State Education Department looking at guiding districts on curriculum when you have update about culturally responsive sustaining educational framework that the State Ed is working on? Can you give any insight on that, if at all, you or either one of you?
I think that's probably a best question best answered by the Commissioner and the Regents, rather than us. So that's something we can get back to you on.
Okay. Well, I am looking forward to that. Obviously, that's extremely important. And especially when you're talking about, you know, culturally responsive sustaining educational framework as especially people of color, especially the group that I come from, African-American. Thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you. And I have one last technical question. You know, because we didn't get to our opening statements, and we really fought to get full funding of Foundation Aid and credit to Senator Jackson for his years of leadership and our Majority Leader, Andre Stewart-Cousins, who really laid down the gauntlet that we were going to get it. And with your help, we did. But it translates to $1.4 billion additional dollars in Foundation Aid, as others have referenced. Can you just describe how that additional money flows to districts in the course of a year? So it isn't like they got it all on day one after we passed the budget. Can you just explain the timing of how Foundation, the additional Foundation Aid money went out the door to districts? To Senator Jackson's point, that districts had a short-term urgent need to hire additional staff to meet the incoming needs of learning loss and social emotional loss when students return this year. So could you just detail for us how that money flows?
Absolutely. Foundation Aid flows through, it's appropriate, or it's in, it's defined in 3602 of education law. 3609 sub A, or 3609 A sub four has the general aids payment schedule that details exactly how general aid payments are paid. That includes Foundation Aid and many of our larger reimbursement-based aids. General aids are paid throughout the school year. There is a schedule on, by which districts are allocated these payments. And it depends partially on their spending levels, their costs of teacher benefits. For example, the first set of funds often goes to support teacher retirement system. But there are monthly payments of general aids throughout the school year, and the additional Foundation Aid would be part and parcel of those payments.
Thank you. And to the question that I believe Senator Mannion raised about the methodology by which the amount of Foundation Aid is determined, which you mentioned State Ed had a proposal, and we had a series of roundtables and hearings across the state on that pre-COVID. Currently, we are subject to the enacted budget with respect to how much each district receives. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that's reflected in the hearing runs that DOB produces after the, at the time the budget is adopted?
It is. Data does, is, for many of the elements, is updated, kind of ongoing throughout the year. The budget provides projections that are estimates, the best we can do at that time. But as districts start reporting actuals to us, many of those are updated and refined as the school year goes on.
Okay. I don't, anyone else have questions? Thank you to this panel. Thank you to your commitment to working with us and with our districts and with, most importantly, for your commitment to our families. importantly, for your commitment to our families and our children in this most difficult year. I know you did yeoman's work, and you continue to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Our next panel is, I believe, we are NISIT Executive Director Andy Pallotta and SANES Director of Governmental Relations Cindy Gallagher. And I think we'll skip my prepared thinking about the beginning since we jumped into that and just move into your testimony and questions. And thank you both for your partnership during this year and your presence here today. So, Mr. Pallotta, I guess you're first.
Thank you. Good morning, and thank you, Chairwoman Mayer and Chairman Liu. This is a great opportunity for us to testify before you today, and I'm actually very happy to be here. It's been about 18 months since I walked through the Capitol and seen the million-dollar staircase and see, thinking about all the rallies that we held there and all the productive movement that has been made in this state. So thank you again. And also, Fund Our Future bus tour, which we took throughout the entire state. And I know we were from Western New York to out on the island. We were in the Bronx. We were in Westchester. That was really productive. And what we talked about was Foundation Aid throughout that time and how important it was. So at the start of the pandemic, we were very much interested in dealing with budget cuts that were talked about by the previous governor and that the fear that we had that they would decimate our schools. We were in Mohanasin for a while and talked with folks there. And I just want to thank you for delivering. You made the promises and you kept those promises, and you delivered a state budget that produced Foundation Aid increases and also the billions of dollars. And we thank Senator Schumer for that money from the American Rescue Plan. That was the one-two punch that we needed to keep us fighting, keep us fighting for students throughout the state. Together throughout our Fund Our Future tour, we met and we spoke about mental health services. That was crucial. That was before the actual crisis hit us so hard. So we talked about out-of-control caseloads that school psychologists and social workers had to deal with, the lack of of a librarian when we visited Rochester. We visited individual schools, and we talked about AP courses not being offered to prepare students for college and for life in general. So now that we have a place where we're hopefully starting to see some sense of normalcy, just being in the Capitol makes me feel that there is, there is a shot at this. We are seeing everyone again, but we know that the social emotional needs of the students is still very high. And last weekend, we convened a meeting at NISIT. We brought folks from around the state, rank-and-file teachers, paraprofessionals. And what they talked about again was the needs and the needs for social emotional work with the social workers, students. And where they have 700 students for one social worker, now a district in Western New York has hired another social worker. So they described it as a pebble hitting the ocean. You know, this is a big problem that they're dealing with. So what we don't want to see is any of the funding that you provided disappear. So of course, that is what we're hearing from districts around the state, that they're afraid at times to spend the money that they have received, right? Because they don't know what's going to happen. Will they hire staff to fill in positions? Well, we have about a third of the teachers in New York State at retirement age, at or near retirement age. So that is a big problem. And shortages throughout the state are starting. We know that through the education system, SUNY schools, the enrollment and education programs is down around 50%. And one of our members spoke about Medellin College, where they used to graduate 350 ed majors a year, now they're down to 35. So we don't have people running into this profession at this time, and that is a big problem. And we spoke about transportation. And let me just say this about Commissioner Rosa. I know her for about 25 years from our work in in the Bronx, and she has always been a fierce advocate. So having her as a partner and you as a partner, Chairwoman, this is a great place for us to be. The darkest time in in the history of my many years in education, we came through it because you came through for us. One of the things is the bus drivers. Now, there's districts throughout the state where it's been highlighted, whether it's Rochester, Syracuse, Gloversville recently was was highlighted again. And we know that in the Southern Tier, one of one of our folks told us that, you know, they're down dozens of bus drivers. They're down three nurses, custodians. In the North Country, another teacher was told that what they're going to look for is maybe teachers can get a CDL license and they can drive the bus. Well, let me just speak to that personally, okay? So when I taught in Brooklyn and in the Bronx, and I had 32 fifth graders before me all day because that was the class size of a fifth grade class, between preparing lessons and meeting with parents and filling all the many roles that a teacher has to fill, my my hair, which is a nice shade of gray now, would be completely gone, and I would be beside myself after that day. I had to then get behind the the wheel of a bus and drive all those students home. So I think I would have gone back to my first career, which was, I've worked in a bank, right? So I would have said, maybe this is just too much for any one human being. And I don't, I don't think that that's the way we should, we should be going. But in all seriousness, the staffing issues depend upon funding, right? So if an Amazon driver's making $30 an hour and a bus driver is making 15 for bringing the most precious cargo we have to and from school, that needs to be addressed. So our schools also need to be updated as far as ventilation. Before the COVID crisis, that was a need. I worked in a school built in the 1890s. The ventilation was the big windows with the window pole. So where you have that, at least you can access fresh air. But some schools don't have that. They have ventilation systems, HVAC, that is outdated and is not producing the amount of movement of air in those schools. So we think that, especially with the needs, the extreme heat that students are having to deal with in schools, that that would be one of our many priorities. So I would just like to leave this with three things. We we need to look at the funding that was delivered and with the federal money, schools that are afraid to spend it, school districts that fear that their funding will be cut off. I just want to appreciate everything again that you've done to produce the Foundation Aid. We will keep very closely working with the federal legislators, but please keep the promise that you've made on Foundation Aid. That was a long, long road, and we celebrate that victory together. Two of our members that are working with us have told us about issues on Long Island. And recently, Newsday reported that just 15% of districts on the island had posted the state-required reports on how they're going to spend that money. So that is, that is really disturbing to us because that money does need to be spent, and it needs to be done in a collaborative way with the teachers, with the parents, all of the constituents. And the last thing is funding alone won't fix all of these problems. We know that. We're going to look at you to champion some legislation that will make it better to be in education, whether it's a teacher and we have a program. Take a look at teaching. Now, we have to expand that to take a look at being a paraprofessional, being a bus driver. We just have to keep expanding that. So providing the mental health staffing levels that are required, also dealing with the heat that's in the schools. Bills, in my testimony, the bill numbers, and just want to say thank you again for moving us in the right direction. Years ago, I would come and testify before the Senate or before the Senate and the Assembly, and it would be a real battle, a real battle. So thank you for your leadership. Thank you for Leader Andrea Stewart-Cousins for the work she's done. And I just thank you so much for the for the work you've done and partnered with us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pallotta. So Cindy Gallagher, go ahead. And then we are going to be more orderly, or I am going to be more orderly in my question allocation. So Cindy, you go, and then we will go through our questions.
Well, good morning. And it's nice to see us all out of our boxes. Chairwoman Mayer, Senator Liu, Honorable Members of the Legislature, and distinguished staff whose work we always appreciate. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on the use of federal funds in our schools. I represent the School Administrators Association of New York State, SANES, and I'm pleased that at this point, we're representing approximately 8,000 building administrators and program directors across the state and have very strong relationships with our colleagues in New York City. To say that this year got off the ground like we had anticipated would be a fair understatement. In many ways, it is more complex, certainly more contentious, and it is very, very difficult. We have not really seen that fresh start feeling of going back to school, and we miss that. However, one of the bright spots to this school is that we are indeed fiscally working on a different level than we perhaps would have anticipated this time last winter. So again, many thanks for all of your advocacy. I want to start right in by asking, trying to answer the question that you raised with this testimony, and what are the funds being used for? As we talk with our members, and I have surveyed, you know, a good number of them, what we're hearing is that certainly this summer, it was the summer programs for academic interventions, enrichment, and as well as social emotional support for those students. And of course, the transportation to get back and forth from those programs. As the school year began, it was really a try to get the after-school program so that students would have a place to go in schools as their parents worked, and then correspondingly the staff to implement those programs. We are also hearing that staff has been added for the the ability to reduce class sizes and to provide academic and emotional support services throughout the day. At the elementary level, we're hearing from some of our districts that they have added school psychologists and have certainly expanded their pre-K programs, which we're very pleased to hear. In terms of facilities, we're hearing certainly an improvement to the ventilation systems as well as to the technology infrastructure. So that is just a few examples of what we are hearing from our members as the school year begins, but we're also hearing of the challenges in regard to that. So in terms of the shortages, for example, the after-school programs have been impacted certainly by transportation. Our school districts that we've heard from are indicating that that's a problem in terms of getting students back and forth for those programs. So how those shortages in terms of all support staff affect the ability to implement programs, we will be watching that very carefully. One of the things that goes hand in hand with that is, of course, what you've heard State Ed talk about this morning, is the ability to get those funding out the door. And I've certainly learned a lot by listening to them this morning, but we carry the concern across the board that districts will, because of the various now implementation issues, still continue to have difficulty getting that funding out the door by 2024. That's going to be a real challenge. The last thing that I want to address as far as at least our membership is the idea of transparency. You've heard a little bit about that this morning, but we too are very concerned that the plans would be put in a place where the public can see them. In terms of Foundation Aid, I know that that was a requirement, as you indicated this morning, that they be putting, already have been put on district websites. As I, excuse me, as I perused probably about 50, 60 websites this summer, it was very challenging to find out anything about Foundation Aid through a district website, and it was confounded by reports on what the budget was about. Conversely, we haven't seen any of the plans because they're only due today, but it concerns me that we, just the public, will be very hard-pressed to find them on a website. So we were in discussions, and I'm glad you heard it this morning, that State Ed is very willing to try to put those links to the plans up, just like they did for the APPR plans. It will be very important for accountability to see the planning, the expenditures, and then the obligations. And then lastly, thank you very much for getting ahead of this issue. In my years here in education, I don't think I've ever seen a hearing this far in advance when a program is just this new, to get a baseline information about it so that we can use that information for its effectiveness and see how it was used in districts. So thank you very much. I think that's a real, just an excellent start to this program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start, and I'm, I'm going to try to be organized. Senator Liu and myself, 10 minutes, everyone else, five minutes, and then in a second round, five minutes, okay? Now I, I have the rules. So question for you, Mr. Pallotta. In your, talking to your members and your districts throughout the state, have your members been consulted in districts' plans either to use their increase in Foundation Aid or this additional federal money? And if not, have they sought to be included and been excluded, or has the process just been less organized than than we would like?
I think the last part of what you just said, a little bit less organized than we would have liked. I think our members, and you know many of the local presidents who have been seeking that information, would have loved to be more involved in the process, right? So I think as it goes forward, and we've, we've had a great relationship working with Dr. Rosa, so we go back and forth where there are specific districts that are having an issue. We'll, we'll make the call, and she has always been able to reconnect people so that they can work better.
I just would point out to others that this is a very intentional add of the legislature to put in a requirement that there be, prior to posting the plan, each school district shall seek public comment from teachers and other stakeholders on the plan and take such comments into account in the development of the plan. Because with this much money and this much fight, we want to be sure that this is a plan that hears from every voice in the education space. So to the extent we need to modify and strengthen that provision, I look forward to hearing some suggestions. On the issue of hiring of social workers, Andy, you raised, and other staff that assist in social emotional health, particularly as kids return post-COVID, did your members indicate that in in most of their districts, the LEAs are hiring this kind of staff? I know, speaking for Yonkers, they, they've returned to hiring social workers and guidance counselors. A fantastic development. We're so pleased. It really translates into meaningful change for our kids. And I know in the other big five, Ed, as well, these are great developments, but of course, we need to sustain them, as you pointed out. But is that your experience, that districts are using their anticipated receipt of funds for rehiring?
Well, definitely from the group that we brought together last weekend. We had been meeting by Zoom throughout the last few months, and then last weekend, we brought them all to NISIT and had in-person conversations. And some of them still felt it wasn't, it wasn't enough. So if you go from a ratio of 700 to one, and now you have two, it's still 350 to to a social worker. So there is movement. We're not going to say there is not movement, but definitely a much more aggressive approach to this because it was in the White Plains schools where we spoke, and they were asking for that pre-COVID.
Pre-COVID.
So it was, it was something that, this is the major issue that we're dealing with in our time, the amount of social work that needs to be done with the students so that they can come to school and and get the ordinary work done.
I think, you know, Andy, that two years ago, prior to COVID, we got 10 million in the budget for school mental health pre-COVID, and I don't believe there's been an ARP in the money out the door, but that was, now it's far, the far greater need. So thank you for that. I have a question on, to either of you. The LEAs are authorized to use ARP funds, and we didn't talk about it much, for educational technology, including hardware, software, connectivity, that aids in regular and substantive educational interaction between students and their classroom instructors. And we all know firsthand that the lack of both instruments and connectivity was a real, made a lasting difference, particularly in our poorer communities among our poorer students. Have you seen districts invest any of this money in broadband access or in tablets or in other technological advances that are needed?
So we're hearing more about the technology infrastructure. I think from what we're hearing from the folks that we've canvassed, is a lot of that work was done throughout the last spring and the summer, trying, in getting those devices into the hands. And I think the, excuse me, the survey that SED put out really showed that, you know, almost eight, only 8% of students didn't have devices at that point in time when they did the survey. So for that hardware type of thing, I think they were working on and feel like they're in a good place. But it is the sustainability of the broadband, the, the cost of the broadband. As I said at the beginning, the issues this year are much more complex, and we did the mechanical stuff last year, right? We did, we did the, the school infrastructure, making classes accessible in smaller units. Now we're getting to the heart of how do you sustain the beginning of what we worked on last year.
Right. So we had some educated Right, and so we had some educators who had to drive to the school so that they could get the Wi-Fi that they needed to communicate with the students who may have had hit-and-miss Wi-Fi, right? So that is definitely something to be addressed. And we also went to school districts where they were having school buses and monitors and educators bringing packets, the manila envelopes of work, and drop those off at students' homes, and then they would pick them up later on in the week, grade them, send them back, where they couldn't have the internet.
And we may not be seeing it in their plans for the ARP funding, but not to lose the fact that there were a lot of other additional funding sources, and one of them for E-Rate. So we may need to look in other sources of funding to see if there were that, is that continued use of the money for the accessibility of broadband?
Well, you know, for me, broadband should be a right, just like electricity is, and if we're going to have remote learning, I think we're going to have to address that, but hopefully there's some momentum now with, between our governor and our federal counterparts. Thank you, and I may go back. Senator Liu?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Cindy, for your testimony, and thank you, Andy. Cindy, with regard to the school administrators throughout the state, are there concerns about the SED's guidelines and deadlines and procedures in review? Do they pose hardships to school administrators, or are they fair?
I think you're asking, did the planning of this funding make our members nervous? I think they're more nervous in terms of getting it out the door, in terms of-
Getting the applications out the door?
Getting it obligated, getting it implemented. Because at the same time that this is occurring, and that's the focus of this testimony, what we're hearing as well is challenges with the COVID testing, as well as the contact tracing that takes up an inordinate amount of their time as well. So when you add the whole package, I think they're more nervous on how we get this all done with the urgency that they know that they need to get it done ASAP because of the 2024 timeframe.
All right, so that's not necessarily, I mean, it's just a lot of work to be done at the same time. And I don't know if SED could have done anything differently with regard to their timeframe, so is, has there been feedback from the school administrators as to, or the school administrators as to what SED could have done differently? Or people just struggling to get everything done within the timeframe?
No, no, we've been in constant contact with SED. We have regular stakeholder meetings. We are conversing about these challenges. That is just the nature of this federal stimulus funding, and we certainly know that the federal administration wants to get this money out during this first year or second year of their administration. So I don't believe that SED could have done anything any faster. It is what it is.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's good to hear. And Andy, thanks for your testimony. One area of your testimony talked about the impending teacher shortage. What can be done by school districts about this? And perhaps should school districts be looking at using some of the foundation aid that they'll be getting in the state budget towards recruitment and retention of teachers in the coming years?
For sure. And I also think that just the, take a look at teaching, having a statewide program of saying, grow your own, get your, get your high school kids to be interested in teaching so that they could go to college and come out as teachers from your own district would be a real impetus. So we've done that, we've been pushing that, and still with the anxiety, the stress, and just thinking about what they have to do each and every day, these are really dedicated, wonderful people, and they're up against big odds, right? So can they, can they produce under these circumstances? I think at this time, we have everybody working together, as much as I've seen in my career, right? So they know that a school administrator, a teacher, paraprofessional, the bus driver, everybody, if we're not working together, there is, there is that fear that it could come apart, right? So we have to keep trying, keep working, and there's no better place to be than in the classroom. A Zoom, like if this meeting was on Zoom, it'd be one type of meeting, but we're in person, it's so much better. So teachers believe, educators believe that being in person is the place to be, even with the complications.
So short of promising never to require teachers to pursue their commercial driver's license, what, I mean, what, what should be done to make sure we don't have a teacher shortage? Is it increasing teacher pay? Is it providing more professional development? Is it recruiting more kids straight out of high school to get on an education track through their college years? I mean-
Right, and there's also the bill that's, a Senate bill, I believe it's Senator Jackson's bill, on the 3.0 GPA, having that addressed-
Relieving that requirement, you mean?
Right, take a look at that requirement so we can open it up a little bit to students that want to be educators and don't have that specific 3.0. That might be very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Senator Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good, oh, good afternoon. It is afternoon.
It's afternoon.
I can tell, I haven't had lunch yet, no. But I wanted to thank you for coming in and giving testimony, both of you. I have a couple of questions, specifically President Pallada, I mentioned Rochester. You heard me, I think I saw you sitting up there, because Rochester has lost so many educators and others, you know, social workers and paraprofessionals, what have you. Have they been in contact with you in developing how they're going to spend the foundation aid? And I say that because in reading briefing documents, it says that they're required input from parents, teachers, and community members, and it must be adopted by a certain date and what have you. So, you know, NICE represents the teachers and other staff in Rochester. Have there been consultations about hiring teachers back, or what?
Well, with the local presidents, both Adam Obansky for the teachers and Angie Rivera for the paraprofessionals, there have been conversations, of course, we want to see those ongoing, and you and I both know that Rochester has been the poster child for the issues before COVID and how they were cutting back and how they were losing staff. We fought for them to retain those educators. They did the cuts. We had the threats of the 20% cuts coming at us pre-COVID, and then we pushed back on those. Only a few districts in the state actually did it, one of them being Rochester, another being Albany, another being Schenectady. There were a few that really got hit hard, and those 20% cuts actually never materialized. But they're working closely, and I can speak to the local presidents there and get back to you on how they're progressing with the Board of Education.
So, and what about Buffalo also? Buffalo is, same thing?
Same thing, more or less, and I speak to the local president there, Phil Rumor, and he is having ongoing conversations with the superintendent, with the school board.
So nowhere outside of New York City that NICE is representing the staff there, the school districts, the LEAs have all been cooperative and communicating with the local presidents and NICE at overall as far as what the game plan is, as far as hiring educators back, social workers, paraprofessionals, other people that, you know, are needed in the school setting?
Right, I would say again, it's mixed, mixed bag from the reception that we got from bringing the folks from around the state. So it was rank and file that we brought together, and so some said we need so much more. We got one social worker, but obviously we needed four. So things like that. So it will be something that continues throughout this period of time before the budget discussions and then during the budget discussions.
So Ms. Gallagher, you represent the administrators in, I think you had initially said 8,000 school districts in the state of New York, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is New York City part of that also?
They are not. As I said, we were closely with our New York City colleagues, but that is not part of Sanes.
Okay. And from your perspective, I think I heard you when you were giving us a briefing, you talked about transparency. And were you involved in getting your input, meaning your organization's input, as far as the foundation aid and how money should be spent as administrators? And I'm curious on that because then, in essence, the LEA should be reaching out to all members of the family, and you as administrators are members of the family, just like educators, just like janitors, just like parents. And so my question is, are they doing that with all members of the family, more specifically with your group of administrators?
Absolutely. We're always at the table either through these kinds of testimonies or through our direct work with the legislator or SED, our own members within our districts. I think at this point, so yes to the involvement in the planning, where now where our members are very interested is to ensure that those plans, whatever was promised in those plans or projected, gets to their schools.
Now, so I am, I'm really concerned on whether or not the LEAs are addressing the needs of the budget deficit with respects to making sure that from a staffing point of view, that we staff up and stay up and not have to, for example, at the end of '23, '24, have to have reductions. So do you have any say on, I mean, to the best of my knowledge, the only way that's going to happen is if in fact there's more money coming from the state of New York. Correct me if I'm wrong in that, and asking, I'm asking for suggestions of what, you know, thoughts you have as far as '23, '24, even though we're in '21, '22, but '23, '24 is right around the corner.
Right, and the foundation aid coming and continuing, that is crucial for us. That has, we heard from districts around the state how that saved them, right, because of what they were facing. But also back to your other question before, we talked about Newsday's report saying 15% have reported out on the island, what they're doing with the money, that is still something that needs to be addressed. So it's the money that's there that needs to be spent. They shouldn't be afraid that all of a sudden it's just going to disappear, right? That there will be more foundation aid coming. We know that the promise has been made, and this is a much better place for us this year as opposed to previous years when we were with our coalition partners, fighting for foundation aid to be taken care of.
Ms. Gallagher?
And if I may, one of the things that we did even before the discussion today was to ensure that when we were working with our districts this summer, to make sure, and working closely with ASBO, which was, is the Association for School Business Officials, to make sure that our folks knew that this was, these funds would be ending, and so they wanted to be very careful in their planning not to make these reoccurring funds, to look at things that could be sustained with this type of funding as opposed to the kind of things that would need to be sustained over five years. So, you know, I'm hoping that SED will see that reflected in the plans that they are, they will be reviewing.
And then outside of the big five, you know, most, all of the other school districts depend on what, for income?
State aid and federal funds at this point.
Yeah, and isn't there in a lot of districts, school tax, and so that comes from the locality? Is that correct?
Correct.
And so I would assume that that's obviously a concern that my colleague Jim definitely knows about, the local taxes. And obviously, that's a big concern wherever you go, increasing taxes in order to provide our children with a decent education, but that, if we don't provide our children with a decent education as a society, we're in trouble. And so I just want you to raise that now because we collectively, as all members of the family, are going to have to find a way to ensure that our children receive the type of education that they rightfully deserve so that they can, you know, be our future leaders of our city, state, and country and world. So I just raise that because even though that's down the road a little bit, but we're going to have to face that at a certain point in time, and so I just wanted to raise that overall. But I thank you for coming in. I will be down in New York City asking the same questions of the Department of Education with my chair, John Liu, and everybody else. So thank you for your coming, and I appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Mannion.
Thank you, Chair Womack. First to President Pallada, you referenced engagement with, you know, local presidents and as far as how engaged they were. But from your organization, which represents 600,000 teachers and others, and your, and the leadership that helps you, do you feel like from your, you know, in whatever manner it was appropriate, you were actively engaged in the process, including the application? Director Gallagher referenced transparency, but as it relates to process, application, and sort of the administration, the promotion of this, and engagement with districts?
I believe on the local level is where it's most important. So we have districts that have had that transparency, that has worked really well. And for those that haven't posted anything on it, and, you know, the beginning of the school year was always focused on getting it off the right way, right? So this is just one more thing on the burner, on this big stove of how many things districts are trying to do. So I realize that they're working on many different items and just trying to get through COVID testing in the first few weeks of school has been a challenge for many districts. So we will keep in touch with all of our local presidents. Wherever there is an issue, we'll bring it up with Dr. Rosa.
And I may have not asked the question clearly because you had referenced local presidents. I mean, how you were connected to SED in that process, application process, their development of the application, their development of the, how the percentages would be distributed, was NICE involved in that?
Definitely involved.
Okay, great. And Director Gallagher, kind of same question, your engagement with SED as, you know, they were trying to create timelines, application process, et cetera?
Absolutely. Not only with the commissioner's office, but the SED has had several longstanding committees, like the Title I Commission on Practitioners and several other work groups where we continue to give the same kind of input.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back to Senator Liu's comment about teacher recruitment and retention, and he's not here, and my, my answer would have been, we need a time machine, actually. We need a time machine for the challenges that were placed in front of public education over the course of the last decade or so. But in lieu of that, I will ask just, just one question as it relates to that, and it can, it will go to President Pallada first, but do you believe that Tier Five and Six, the establishment of those, has had a dramatic impact, or what level of impact it has on teacher recruitment?
It's had an impact, but I think when we look back at when this all started, it was the lack of respect that was shown for educators, especially in this state, you know, blaming people, blaming educators who went to work each and every day and did their best, and saying, well, we spend more in this state than any other state, but our results are not as good. I, you know, when you have some districts spending 32,000 per student and others spending 13,000 per student, that's the real difference, you know, and that was really something we love to see addressed. And I believe that we do have more respect for the educators, people really understand what they're doing and how hard it is. So, you know, that is one part of it, but it was the big picture of the lack of respect that was given to the profession, to the actual educators.
Thank you. Director Gallagher, anything further on that?
I would concur with everything that Andy just said.
Great. Thank you, Chair Womack.
Thank you, Senator Reitler-Melnick.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So I appreciate both of you being here and sharing your concerns and your thoughts on this because it's certainly important for me and for everybody up here to hear what you're dealing with and what your members are dealing with. So two sort of things I wanted to drill in a little bit on. So you had mentioned, Mr. Pallada, there's certain districts and certain areas around the state where membership is not being consulted by the district as they're developing these plans, not trying to name districts, but can you give some examples of how this is playing out if, you know?
Well, I think what I, what I'll get is a phone call from a local president who will say, you know, they're just, they're just not sharing this information, they go ahead and they make plans without talking to us. So then what I do is I get to Dr. Rosa and say, can you speak to the district and see what's going on, how we can be helpful?
How widespread would you say this is? Is it a few districts, or it's really a significant problem?
Right now, it's been a few.
Okay.
So we're still in September, almost in our shell, but hopefully, hopefully it gets better. better as districts get a handle on it.
And if we're hearing from parents and teachers who feel like they're not being represented at the school level, they should be reaching out up the chain to you, should be reaching out to SED directly?
Most definitely.
Great, all right. I also was interested to drill down, you have in your testimony here that many districts are not willing to make investments in staffing because they know that the American Rescue Plan money is going to come to an end.
Correct.
And you're urging them to rethink that, given that it could be a little short sighted. Just talk a little bit about, you know, what your hope is they would do there?
That they would do the hiring that they need, that they would hire the social workers, psychologists, the educators, knowing that foundation aid by the state has been taken care of, and also that we have representatives in the federal government who do not want to see us go into chaos, right? That this is, would be a terrible place for us to just lose any of the progress that we've made in, in terms of funding education in this, in the entire country, let alone New York, right? So that this needs to be taken care of, where you have such disparities between one district and another is just not right. We, we've been talking about it for years.
I, I appreciate that, and I think that's a very important point to make for any districts that are listening, that this is something we've got to think long-term and not just use this as a short-term fix without addressing some of these systemic issues. So I appreciate that.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Jackson, and then I have some final questions.
Sure, thank you. I wanted to ask about, obviously, COVID-19 is everywhere and the variant, Delta, and impact it's having on children. From a, the employees of your union, both Nicet and administrators, how is that impacted as far as staff getting the vaccinations or by not getting vaccination, what type of impact that's having? If you can shed any light as far as your unions are concerned or the association, Ms. Gallagher, I would appreciate that. Just, I just want to know from a knowledge point of view.
Sure. Well, that could certainly be the topic of a whole other hearing. Right now, again, it just because it's at the beginning of the year, we've certainly, as an association, put out a lot of guidance to our members in terms of taking a position that all staff should be vaccinated as well as tested, but if they do not want to be vaccinated, they opt out with weekly testing. So that's where our organization has landed in terms of working with school districts and working towards that. Is it an issue? Are things contentious in every local school district? I should say all, many? And that's how I began my, my remarks. So for some reason, we aren't getting that fresh start to this school year because of the various tensions. So yes, that's part of the whole thing, as well as the testing, as well as the shortage of perhaps testing supplies, one, one major bucket of challenges.
And we have the same policy, which is vaccine or test weekly. We believe that that has worked in most districts around the state and also the anxiety, the nervousness of just being in buildings again. We know it's, it's something that makes people fearful of catching, even having the meeting today that we're in person as opposed to being on Zoom. Zoom, you're not going to catch anything. Maybe you get a little, your foot falls asleep, but that would be the most dangerous thing that could happen. But here, we're in person and, you know, people are fearful, whether they're vaccinated or not vaccinated.
From your union's perspective and from an association's perspective, has it had an impact on operations of the schools, school or school district that you're involved with as far as staff not, for example, not coming in and not being vaccinated and/or the, you know, staff or students being COVID-19 positive and, and the normal protocol that have to be followed as far as, you know, isolation and social distancing and things like that?
And I hope my remark doesn't sound like I'm sidestepping your question, but schools are a very close-knit organization usually. And as Andy indicated, I do believe that every school is really trying their very best to get this school year off with a commitment to in-person instruction. Does it calling, cause anxiety? Does that require people to feel anxious? I heard a term recently on, on a couple of podcasts, pandemic influx syndrome. I don't know what you name it, but there certainly is all sorts of up and downs and feelings across the board. So yes.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. That is, the way people feel that they are working together as best they can under very difficult circumstances.
Have you noticed in any, for example, number of students not showing up to, to school because, in fact, I don't know whether or not the, the local educational agency is having, you know, remote virtual learning and/or a blended combination of in-school and virtual? Is that, what type of impact?
I think most are doing in-person.
Say that again?
Most of them are doing in-person learning, so.
Right. And we'll see how it, you know, we will see how it proceeds in terms of as the COVID testing gets moving, if, if students have to be quarantined. I mean, we, we still need to see how this plays out. It's only the first few weeks of school. So right now, I would agree with Andy. What we're seeing with our member districts is primarily all in-person instruction and attempt to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do you have a, no, okay. So Cindy, this is a question for you. With respect, one thing to clarify, so we committed the full funding of foundation aid over the next two years, that every district got 60% this year. Every district, even that was below 60, above 60%, got a 2% increase, a substantial promise of additional money over the next three years. And the statute, the budget required that for the 21, 22 year, which we're in, if you got more than 10% or $10 million before July 1 of this year, you had to post to your website how such funds would be used to address student performance and need. And again, these were intentional words. They're not an afterthought. We worked hard to insist that there be a showing that this money goes to a purpose, including but not limited to increasing graduation rates and eliminating the achievement gap, reducing class size, providing support for students who are not meeting or at risk of not meeting state learning standards in core academic subject areas, addressing student social emotional health, and providing adequate resources to English language learners, students with disabilities, and students experiencing homelessness. Prior to posting the plan, each school district shall seek public comment from parents, teachers, and other stakeholders on the plan and take such comments into account in the development of the plan. So to the point that by July 1 of this year, they were required to post, is it your experience that the majority of the districts that are in your organization did comply or have complied with that?
I would say that as I perused probably about 50 websites, because I'm very interested in knowing that. I do believe that I would love a database that laid out where the monies were being used, what staff had added, and the program purpose. I did not see that when I went into district websites. When I did find something on the budget or funding or foundation aid, it was, and I'm glad I know the terminology, put it that way, it was very difficult to divide out what their budget proposal was versus a foundation aid. So it was maybe a reporting that this is what we intended to do with the budget, but it didn't convert into what was foundation aid. My experience.
So just, yeah, no, I, I think that's our concern. Districts are required generally to have their budget be publicly available, so that is on the website. And in many cases, the board voted on the budget this year, you know, earlier in the spring. That's one set of data, important for taxpayers, parents, teachers, everyone to see. This was a separate requirement that we intended to ensure that these issues specifically noted here to address student performance and need with these factors that we mentioned were taken into account. We did not intend for it to be ignored, and I'm not suggesting that you supported that. You obviously were concerned. Do you believe that we need to strengthen this reporting requirement or perhaps impose, not penalties or something, but some oversight to require districts to comply with this? Because I, I know, speaking for all of us who struggle to get this money, we want to know that these issues of outcome and performance, class size, addressing student need of students with disabilities, and English language learners, and homeless students, is part of the plan. So would you recommend that there be strengthening of this language for the next school budget year?
When there is so much on our districts' plates, probably the additional information out to them with some indications of what is expected would probably be an excellent idea. And as you talked also about the federal side of it in terms of the plans, we have opportunities. This is, school districts can still amend their plans. If they do so, then it is also an opportunity to remind plans, you know, districts that those plans again would be appropriately placed on websites and whatever information we want to get out to them, yes.
Well, I did appreciate your pointing out in your testimony that SED should post, and they've agreed to do so today, the applications for the federal funds. But with respect to these foundation aid funds, I would suggest we're going to need to revisit whether there's been compliance and if not, how to ensure that there's an accounting and a process by which these hard-fought funds are ultimately used.
Sure.
For, for your, your members' benefits and for the people we represent. Any other questions, comments? Senator Jackson, you?
Last question. As far, I've, I've asked about the deadline as far as, as far as state education department approving plans and the deadline for using the federal fund, or else it goes back to the feds. And, and I heard you both express the situation as far as people may not want to hire up when they have to reduce again in a year and a half, two years. But do you think, though, that in order to sustain the staffing point of view from labor is concerned, should that be sustained by the districts, the local LEAs? And based on what I know, many of them, almost all of them, will not be able to afford it. Or should the state as the, the mothership, in essence, provide for the, the local LEAs in order to maintain the staffing so our children can be guaranteed that adequate education that they're entitled to from a constitutional point of view?
I believe the state, when you talk about the mothership and having the capability of paying for that, it would have to come from the state because of the disparities in districts around the state to be able to do it, right? So if a district is fearing that they are going to fall off a cliff by hiring people to actually get the job done, then they won't do that. We need to reassure them that the foundation aid is going to continue to come and that the state will take care of.
Well, any comments, Ms. Gallagher?
Just, if I may, just a little tweaking, when you started off, a little tweaking, if I may, you started off your comments by saying districts don't want to. I think they really do want to add the staff as much as they can. I think Andy is correct about their concerns, but I, I honestly believe that our districts really want to find the staff to put into place to use this money wisely.
Well, I just expressed my opinion. If I'm a staff member, regardless of what title, and I've been laid off, I would want to come back, even if I have to come back for a year and a half or two years, that's, you know, in order to sustain my family and myself and health insurance and all the things that people need. I just throw that out from a position of just understanding that people are struggling in order to maintain their families and make, pay their rent, pay their mortgages. And so everything has to be done in order to ensure that the family survives. And the family is all of us.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. Thank you for your really, you know, I just feel the obligation to thank everyone who appears today. In the education space, I can't imagine a more trying year than you and your members have had. So thank you for your hard work. Thank you very much. Next is from the Conference of Big Five School Districts, Executive Director Jennifer Pyle, from the Albany City School District, Superintendent Kueda Adams, and the New York State Council Schools Superintendent, Assistant Director Bob Lowry. And after that panel, might I suggest we take a 10-minute break before we get to Panel Four, New York State PTA Executive Director Kyle Velikopitsky, and AQUE Executive Director Jasmine Gribber. Do you have a preferred order? Superintendent, or Jennifer, would I prefer?
Sure. Are you first? Good afternoon. Thank you so very much for this opportunity to be here to share our information with you. And I would like to start by saying thank you for all of your support regarding the funding of our school districts. Your support and advocacy is critical to the success of our schools. We appreciate the foundation aid support this year, and we look forward to that continued support over the next few years. We have been working diligently to ensure that we are developing and implementing plans which are research-based and which will meet the needs and the collective needs of our students, our families, our faculty, and our staff. These funds will make a positive difference in the lives of our children and assist us in providing equitable access and opportunities for our students and families. Foundation aid provided an additional $9.5 million to the budget for the City School District of Albany, and we are absolutely appreciative of that. The American Rescue Plan funding will account for approximately $32.7 million of our school district's one-time funds. We worked with our community during the spring and the summer to develop the following ARP funding priorities for the 21, 22 school year. These priorities, hands down, from every stakeholder that participated in the survey, social and emotional well-being of our students was the number one priority. Second to that, educational technology, closing and continuing to close that digital divide and improve our infrastructure, safety and security of our students, HVAC, ventilation and air filtration improvements, as well as accelerated learning and academic support through the hiring of reading teachers, math teachers, special education teachers, encore teachers, ELL teachers who are certified, and kindergarten, and the hiring of our teaching assistants to help facilitate small group instruction and support for our special education programs. The priority areas for our ARP and foundation aid funds for the 21, 22 school year, not limited to the list that you have in front of you, but these were the priorities. Again, number one, social and emotional well-being of our students and the mental health support, which enabled us to look at the wraparound services with our community partners, as well as implement research-based programs in the classroom so that we are addressing social and emotional needs every single day. Summer programming was enhanced. This year, we were able to not only offer remediation for summer school, we looked at one-time course credit for advancement for our students because there is a population that's looking to get ahead and open up their schedule, especially at the secondary level, so that they can take additional courses in those fields of like music or science or areas like that to improve their academic success. So we were able to offer courses for advancement during our social, our summer programming. Closing the digital divide, we were able to, we are now a one-to-one district. We were able to work with our community partners, and thank you very much for the support with regard to the broadband pieces because that has been very helpful. But we have also been able to work with our community partners and some of our vendors to ensure that we have internet access for our families, hotspots, as well as Chromebooks to address some of those unique situations. At our homeless shelter, we have been able to provide a bank of computers along with hotspots for internet connectivity for our students who may be in the shelter. We have implemented blended learning instructional practices and professional development. We know that with the thrust and change to virtual learning in March of 2020, that we have learned a lot from that. And so versus just what we were thrust into by taking what we did as teachers and leaders in a, an in-person format, then we just moved that to a virtual format. We are now looking at how do we truly integrate and embed blended learning practices so that our teachers can be successful, so that our students can be successful. One of the things that we're most proud of with our ARP funding is the ability to put out an RFP for our community. ability to put out an RFP for our community where we took about $1.7 million and we allocated that so that we can help our community be more engaged with what we do. We received approximately 21 applications for this RFP process. We will be looking to award those within the next week. And then you can see in front of you the areas that were covered through this RFP process. Before school, after school, enrichment programs, Saturday school, STEM enrichment, literacy enrichment, staffing, and also instructional supplies. In order to address our ELL population, which is already a, a very high population for us, we are roughly a 10%, 10% of our population are ELL students. We have an AIC program, which is the Albany Center for our, I'm sorry, our Albany International Center. During the pandemic, we had to change that model and have it be a model which was a school within a school model. We saw success with it, but not as much success as when we had it as a standalone. Our community came out and stood up and said, these are things that we need for our immigrant population. So we have now reinstated and rebuilt that program stronger than ever because not only are we looking to address secondary, which is what the program was, we have used these funds to expand it K-12. And so we're very excited about that. We've also partnered with Capital Region BOSI for the Virtual School Partnership, and it is a regional approach. We're also looking at our school nurses, behavioral specialists, social workers, and school psychologists because those wraparound services are essential to the success of our students. And so we have not only looked to increase the number of staff, but we've also worked creatively with our union in terms of how can we have extra pay for extra duty to, so that the services can still be provided, even if our coffers are empty with regard to people applying? How can we then help those who are already in those positions with extra pay, extra duty? So we have been doing that. Of course, the positive behavioral interventions and supports for the safety and security. We look at our home monitors and our school campus neighborhood security officers, and those are all district personnel. We have looked at additional deep cleaning and sanitization with the COVID protocols because with the increase of student population during the pandemic, we had about 46% of our students were in person and the remaining were virtual. And now that we are fully in person with all of our students coming back to school, we have increased needs from our maintenance and operations team. So we have looked at various strategies to assist them with regard to how do we deep clean our buildings. We're not perfect yet, but we are on the way, and that's what some of these funds are also being used for. Our HVAC ventilation improvements, our systems meet the qualifications and the recommendations of the, of the state. However, we have seen some recent challenges with our systems. And so we have dedicated some of our funds for ARP with regard to the ventilation. And of course, the well-rounded student is something that we're always looking for, that social emotional component, physical fitness and awareness and education. We're looking at an athletics intermurial program that spans from elementary all the way through high school. So our ARP investment will be vital through the pandemic and once it finally ends. However, when these one-time funds expire, all districts will be facing significant budget deficits and the resulting challenges to sustain these programs. We have a process in place that we are looking at for sustainability. I'll be happy to answer that during the question and answer period, but we are looking at how do we sustain the things that we are seeing progress with at this time. And again, I thank you for your support. We appreciate the time today to be able to share with you what we have been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Adams. That was great. I think let's hear from Jennifer Pyle and Bob Lowry, and then we will take questions.
Good afternoon. Our membership includes Buffalo, New York City, Rochester, Syracuse, Yonkers, Albany, Mount Vernon, and Utica Public Schools. Collectively, our urban school districts educate 46% of New York State's public school children. We're very grateful for the opportunity to testify before you here today. Superintendent Alseya from Syracuse is unable to be with us today. We did submit written testimony on his behalf. And you'll also be hearing from Chancellor Porter and Dr. Casada, Superintendent of the Yonkers Public Schools on October 5th in New York City. I'd first like to thank you for your unwavering commitment to the pursuit of equitable and adequate funding for the state's neediest school districts and the vulnerable populations that we serve. The additional resources you provided in the 2122 adopted state budget enabled our school districts to bridge sizable budget gaps. Each of the Big Five relied upon the increase in state support to avert damaging programmatic reductions and to address extraordinary people needs that were exacerbated by the pandemic. These additional funds were key to expansion of academic supports, including those for English language learners, students with disabilities, and providing enhanced programming to address social emotional needs of students. The Syracuse City School District in particular expanded their Office of Family Engagement to address student attendance issues, support family outreach efforts, and assist families with connecting with social, emotional, and mental health services within the community. All of the Big Five are committed to maximizing community engagement throughout their planning and budgeting process. Public outreach was accomplished in a plethora of ways, including significant utilization of various virtual platforms. These efforts are ongoing as they work to assess the needs and support pupils and families who continue to face a lot of challenges. Your success in securing the increase in state aid via foundation aid allowed school districts to maximize their use of the federal resources and to focus those on the COVID-related priorities for which they were intended. The Rochester City School District has targeted a portion of their federal resources to address learning loss through extended learning and enhanced enrichment experiences for students. These initiatives are aligned with the district's strategic plan and the recommendations of the statutorily authorized academic and fiscal monitor. The Mount Vernon City School District was one of many school districts that utilized a portion of the federal funds to support a robust, evidence-based summer learning and summer enrichment program. This program enabled the district to address learning loss and assist students with social emotional challenges that were facing them. Many of our school districts are also utilizing federal funds to support the expansion of some of the most successful career and technical education programs in the country. The Buffalo Public Schools in particular are targeting federal dollars to expand their partnerships with post-secondary education and industry leaders. As you're well aware, and it's been mentioned numerous times today, the pandemic highlighted the glaring digital divide and its impact on children in urban school districts. Despite significant efforts to ensure that students had access when school districts were forced to pivot to a remote learning platform, there are still significant deficiencies that must be addressed. Utica is utilizing a portion of their federal funds to upgrade instructional technology across the district to aid in specialized methods of instructional delivery. Virtually all of the initiatives I've outlined would not have been possible absent your commitment to providing additional state aid, along with your success in advocating for our schools on the federal level. I'd be remiss if I failed to acknowledge the state education department's extraordinary support for our school districts throughout these most difficult times. Each of our school districts are working closely with the department and other partners conduct, to conduct ongoing evaluations of their programs and the impact they're having on children. In closing, I must note that we remain deeply concerned about the funding cliff that's been mentioned numerous times today. All of our school districts are working to maximize resources and ensure they have sound, long-term financial plans in place. However, there's no expectation that the fallout from the pandemic will be over and the needs of our schools fully satisfied when the federal funds are exhausted. We urge you to maintain the commitment to the foundation aid phase-in, and we stand ready to support you and your efforts. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Director Lowry?
Senator Mayer, Senator Lou, and other senators, thank you very much for this opportunity to testify today and for all your work on the 202122 state budget. And it is nice to be back in this building again. I'm Robert Lowry, Deputy Director of the New York State Council of School Superintendents. Almost from its enactment in 2007, we've referred to the foundation aid formula as an underappreciated accomplishment in public policy. Yesterday, we released a report on the state of the, of the formula, and your efforts in this year's budget have resurrected the promise of foundation aid. Thank you. We've also emphasized to our members the careful work that you and your staff did to assure that the federal COVID relief funding could be used to supplement and not supplant regular state and local funding. We appreciate the budget language provisions that designated those funds as grants and aid and to be accounted for in the special aid fund. These allowed districts, made it easier for districts to plan to use those funds over a multi-year period. I think it's important to begin by observing that there was evidence that students in schools were struggling before the pandemic took command of so much of our attention. That's illustrated in our submitted testimony by some charts based on surveys we did years past. Those surveys in particular show just surging concern among superintendents about the mental health needs of students, and every indication is that those have grown since the pandemic took hold. One superintendent of a well-off district observed, "We know how to help students recover from time lost in learning, but trying to understand how to help them with social emotional problems is something new and very different." We didn't do a survey in 2020. It would have been tone deaf for us to impose our own demands on our members then, but we will be doing a survey in the next month or so, and that will give us more systematic and refined information to share with you. You ask how districts engage their school communities in planning for the use of their funds. I work primarily with districts which subject, which submit their budgets for voter approval, and stakeholder engagement is just part of standard operating procedure for them. But I will say the timing this year was not optimal. You know, last spring, districts were doing all the usual stuff with preparing for the end of the school year, trying to get a budget passed. Also unusual challenges with, you know, will the state be more flexible with graduation ceremony requirements and so forth? And then during the summer, it's not an ideal time to engage people. But, you know, we do know that districts did many of the standard things, and we'll be reiterating to them your concern about stakeholder engagement. You ask also about how districts are using the money. What we have right now is very much anecdotal. Again, a survey will give us more systematic information, but common themes that we heard were districts are using funds to expand summer school, to extend the school day, add after-school programs, some reducing class sizes, adding literacy support, adding mental health professionals, not just help students, but also staff. And it also appears common for districts to invest in professional development, either to support improved instruction or to better recognize and help schoolchildren struggling with social emotional issues or both. We also know that some are using federal funds to make improvements in their facilities, including better ventilation. That's something we'll try and explore in a survey. Some will be replacing tablets and laptops that were damaged or wore out through greater than normal use necessitated by the shift to remote instruction. Hearing notice also asks how will districts assess the impact of the programs they adopt? First, districts will continue doing many of the things they've employed in the past. This will allow for historical comparisons, things like standardized assessment results, not just the state results, but the assessments that they purchase from vendors, things like credit accumulation, grades, attendance data, and referrals for special help, both academic and for other needs. We also know that some districts are using their federal aid to purchase more and better assessments for both academic and social emotional learning, and some have spelled out plans how they will use those assessments to trigger extra help. For now, we can also provide some broad brush evidence of the impact the state budget had on the, the local budgets that districts asked their voters to approve. It's illustrated by charts in our submitted testimony. The poorest districts were able to propose budgets to their voters with the largest spending increases and lowest tax increases, enabling them to do more for their students while asking less from their taxpayers when compared to other districts. There have been years when the opposite was true, and a year ago when foundation aid was frozen, the results on both those measures was more random. The additional support given to our schools this year through your efforts and your counterparts in Washington is truly exceptional, but the experiences of our students over these last 18 months have been exceptional as well, and so are the challenges still ahead for our schools. We're grateful for your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you. I have some questions. First, Superintendent Adams, thank you. It's really wonderful for you to describe in sort of a granular detail what you did to, using these funds, and I assuming using everything else you have at your disposal, to try to address your, your kids' needs. I wondered, one thing is on after-school and early-school. You mentioned that. Did you have that prior to sort of the COVID experience? And if you did, is it enhanced with these funds?
Not so much the before-school pieces, but absolutely, we did have after-school programming for our students at elementary, middle, and high school. The funds have allowed us to make it a little bit deeper and, and to bring in more of those enrichment activities and to work with our community partners on how do you partner with what our students are doing during the school day? Because again, we have the computers now, so we can, they do have access to the technology so that some of that after-school programming can now reinforce what our students are doing, doing during the day. One of the other components is Saturday school. The last time that we had a Saturday school component was when one of our middle schools was in receivership, and we looked at that format. And so now we have expanded those opportunities with some of the proposals with regard to how do we take Saturday school and not just make it school, but now look at the whole development of the child? What are some of the enrichment activities we could do? What are some of the intermurals that we could do? How can we bring in STEM, hands-on, project-based learning on a Saturday morning? Those kinds of things is what the money has been able to help us do to help our community be a part of it, which, you know, it just, it's just a cycle now. How can the school help our community? By utilizing some of these funds to bring those programs to us.
Well, that's great to hear, and I think we'd love to see even more detail that really translates into value for these kids. And I'm glad you made special mention of your ELL. You said it was 10% of your Albany public school. What percentage of the Albany School District is in charter schools? I know it's significant.
Roughly, I can tell you in terms of dollars, we have about $35 million that, from our budget that goes to our charter schools, but we do have a large saturation of charter schools within the City School District of Albany.
$35 million of, what's your total budget?
I'm sorry to say that.
What is your total budget?
Total budget is $260 million.
Okay.
$60 million.
$260. I, I was also very interested, because I think it's relevant to our kids recovering, is the proposal to expand intermurals in elementary and secondary grades as opposed to solely sports for high school students, which I think happened to a lot of schools during tough times financially. Has that started? And if so, what fun, what are you using the funds for?
So it has not started yet because we're in the planning phases of getting that off the ground. But what it will be is looking at how physical education contributes to the social and emotional well-being of students, so that we're looking at the whole child development. And then what are those things that we can provide roughly two weeks at a time, three weeks at a time? It may be soccer, it may be flag football, but there's also that social emotional learning component that will be embedded in the intermurals.
Okay. Now, you receive less than $10 million or I think less than 10% of your total budget through this increase in foundation aid. So you're not required under the budget document to complete this form. I believe I'm correct. But with respect to the federal funds, did you file an application with SED?
We did.
And can you tell us approximately when?
It was this morning.
Oh, okay.
It was, we finalized, we had a few adjustments that came in late just due to some of our COVID expenditures and looking at those true. And I'll, if you don't mind, I'll go right into that sustainability piece-
Yes.
-because this directly relates to that.
Thank you.
We had some last-minute things that we needed to do to address some of our true one-time funds.
Yes.
And so in making those adjustments, we just had to tweak that, and then we did complete our submission this morning, and so it has been submitted. But that sustainability piece is extremely important. And so I'll let you know, our process with regard to the sustainability was, first of all, we looked at those true one-time expenditures, things like our technology infrastructure that would not have to be renewed for several years down the line, and we would have time to plan for that. We looked at our HVAC enhancements so that we could be truly a maintenance and operations division versus reacting to the, the one-offs that happen almost on a daily basis for us. How do we get our systems to the point that we are truly- How do we get our systems to the point that we are truly maintaining them and utilizing some of those one-time dollars for that HVAC and air filtration and ventilation? We also looked at the COVID expenses. Those were true one-time expenses. And then, of course, professional development for a blended learning model, as well as the accelerated learning models that we're looking to implement to start that professional development, because then we would be able to embed those practices down the line so that would not be a recurring cost, because we're looking to embed those practices to improve the delivery of instruction and support for our students. So once we did that, then we were able to start projecting forward, what would that carryover money look like year over year so that when our foundation aid is fully funded, what would we need to absorb? And so we're looking at that almost daily and weekly as those changes come about so that we can sustain these programs. And then also, when we talk about the attrition of staff, yes, we want to make sure that our staff and our staffing ratios have been at a level that supports our students, but what we are strategically working on is how do we build in that staffing so that at the end of three years, we're not having to have those budget cuts? And that is, that's a daily look at where we are with our hiring, with our staffing. How are we now embedding some of those services and procedures that we need to do so that we don't have to lose staff in the end?
Thank you very much for that, and that's a sort of, I think, what we had hoped for, a very thoughtful way of using the funds for things that will not replicate themselves. I just, for Mr. Lowry, I know you make some thoughtful comments here about the July 1 deadline that we imposed in the statute as being incompatible, and certainly take them under advisement. That being said, representing school superintendents, did you find the majority of your superintendents have complied with the requirements of the foundation aid inclusion process and reporting that was required in the statute?
Yeah, I think it's entirely reasonable for you to want some assurance that districts are, have plans to use that money effectively and have engaged stakeholders in planning how to use that. I would say, you know, for our organization, we were very focused on communicating to superintendents about the questions they had regarding the use of the federal money and dealing with some other issues, again, like, you know, will the state loosen up on graduation ceremony requirements? We will, in the days and weeks ahead, be communicating more with our members about the priorities that you've indicated in this hearing and the interest of, you know, trying to assure that, you know, stakeholders are engaged. And as I say, through our surveys, we'll try and gather more systematic information for you about how districts are using the funds.
Thank you. Last question. I have a little discomfort with a concern that districts are using some of these funds to purchase new products from vendors that don't have a verified success, and that the vendor community potentially sees this money as an opportunity to continue to, you know, make money in our schools, which I understand is part of their business model. Is that fear or concern misplaced on my part? Or do you have any thoughts about whether these funds are being used to buy, for example, products that are new or don't have a proven track record? For example, you mentioned on assessments. That's what prompted my thinking on this.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understood the question. You know, if, as I say, I'm just not sure I understood your question.
So my question is, they got money. They can use it for a wide variety of uses. Buying things from outside vendors is part of the school process and a very understandable one. On the other hand, we want this money to be used for things that will result in improved student performance and student mental health and the things that we were concerned about.
Yeah. Yeah, I think the overwhelming share of the money is going to be used for, you know, direct student services. You know, mental health services, we've had conversations with superintendents where they're talking about, you know, either hiring staff, working with community agencies. So I think that's, again, the overwhelming share of the money. But there are the concerns about sustainability, and we are getting the foundation aid money. That can be used for, you know, recurring costs. I think that was a game changer for districts. You know, they were very concerned about the so-called fiscal cliff. And so it does, I think there is some justification for using federal money to purchase, you know, products that are, you know, perhaps one-time in use.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? We've been joined by Senator John Brooks, Senator Brooks. Any other questions? Senator Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your point, all three of you made points about us maintaining our commitment to phasing in the second and third year of foundation aid. So the point is well-taken, and I will speak for myself, but I think my colleagues share with me the sentiment that we are going to maintain the continued increases in the foundation aid until all of it is phased in through fiscal '24. You also all mentioned the concern about the fiscal cliff coming at the end of the federal aid. So is that direct, is that, the federal aid is not, was never meant to be ongoing. It was really to deal with COVID-related, extraordinary expenses related to the COVID crisis. So are you anticipating that some or many of those additional expenditures will continue beyond 2024?
Our districts have been very thoughtful and very cautious with regard to the way they're programming those funds, and clearly the requirements are intended to ensure that you're not using them for recurring expenditures. So to the extent that they can do that, they are very, very careful about doing so. However, you know, absent additional resources, there are areas where they probably would like to continue to provide additional social emotional, continued academic enhancements, and we're not certain that our districts will have the local capacity and that perhaps the foundation aid alone will be sufficient to meet those needs. But we greatly appreciate the fact that you've made the commitment, and it's huge, that they recognize they can rely on that. But again, we're not intending that anyone is going to come in and replace those federal dollars, but I do think when we get to the end of this, there will be additional needs, and that's the concern. But no one's building in extra staff or extra programs that they can't sustain. At least in my districts, I know they're being very cautious about that.
So, but again, if the concern is about the federal funding ending because that federal funding is related to the COVID crisis, if we think that there are going to be extraordinary school expenses related to the COVID crisis that go beyond the current timeframe, maybe at this point, it's time to start raising those flags with our federal colleagues as well, to say that, you know, maybe some of this extraordinary COVID-related expense money will need to be continued or once again authorized beyond the current timeframe.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And Senator, thank you very much for raising that flag, because one of the things that we do daily is we watch the numbers. And whether these COVID interventions or needs are going to continue, it is going to be based on what happens with the COVID-19 pandemic. And should we continue to need the levels of PPE that we have? Should we continue to have testing and, you know, running our immunization and vaccination clinics for additional staffing to do that? Should those things continue, they are contingent upon where we are within this pandemic. And so not knowing what's going to happen in the future and to be prepared for that, I absolutely appreciate you bringing that to the table, because that is something that we do need to consider, that if in three years, or two years now, if we are in the same position, then we will need to have additional support to continue the level of pandemic support that we have been able to put into place.
Thank you.
Senator.
Madam Chair. First, let me thank this panel for coming in, and especially, I wanted to thank the superintendent of Albany, because you spoke specifically about your district, which is very important. Obviously, the Big Five is the Big Five. But to have a superintendent speak specifically about their district is always better. Obviously, Buffalo's a long way from here, and North Country's a long way from here. Albany is just, you know, a couple of miles from here with respect to maybe where your district office is. But I also am expressing concern, and I'm asking all of you about, how has the fact that the mandate for vaccinations impacted the superintendent's association, the Big Five overall, and more specifically, an Albany school district? What type of impact has it had on operations? And like, is it, as a result of that, 10% and 5% of your staff are not showing up because of the mandate, or what? Have any detail? You can start anywhere you want.
I'd say there's kind of two sets of effects. One is how do you implement it? And early on, we heard a lot of concern from superintendents about ability to get the test, to be able to carry out the testing. I would say that in, I think, most parts of the state, not all, but most, school districts and county health departments have developed very cohesive relationships and have had a lot of practice now working together. But that's not consistent everywhere. So that was one set of concerns, and, you know, those hopefully are working their way out. The other set of concerns would be impact on the workforce. And not so much teachers, but lower-paid people saying, "I don't want to become vaccinated. I don't want to subject myself to regular testing," either for philosophical reasons or just because of complications, time it would take, any costs that they might incur, that sort of thing. So that was something that we've communicated. We're not sure how much of an effect that is having yet, but I have, probably the number-one issue on my plate right now is bus driver shortages, and they're an example, lower-paid people. And so that's something that we're continuing to wrestle with. We don't have systematic data across the state, but I will tell you, I had a call at 7:00 last night about a bus driver shortage issue, and I've had text messages this morning about it. So that's the kind of issue. But it's not just bus drivers, it's other types of employees, and there is a concern that as temperatures drop and weather changes, that these will become even greater issues.
So I will address this in a little different way, because I'll talk very specifically about our district. One of the things very early on in the process, and I'll start with a little background and make it very quick, but I meet weekly with our association presidents and bi-weekly with a couple of, for example, our administrative and our teachers. That's a bi-weekly meeting that we have. And so these things that were coming up early in the summer, we were able to come together and meet with their executive teams and talk about, how is it that we would be able to facilitate, if there is a vaccine mandate, or if not, what are some of the things that we might be able to do? And so in having those conversations, we were putting together what that might look like for our teachers, administrators, and support staff. One of the things that we are doing right now is we gave our teachers and all of our employees a period of time to submit their proof of vaccination. And beyond today, in fact, today is the day that everyone was supposed to submit their proof of vaccination or consent to weekly testing. And so we have that particular piece in place. We have done an MOA with our teachers' association with regard to that. So we started those conversations early on, just in preparation for where we might be and what those possibilities might be. We also have a very robust labor management meeting with all three of our associations where these types of things are addressed, and that is a monthly meeting. It is a standing monthly meeting with regard to our back-to-school plans and the vaccination, proof of vaccination procedure. Those kinds of things were talked about in meetings with our union leaders present, as well as representation at all levels, when we started this process back in March for our back-to-school plan. And so having them at the table, you know, I am only one person with one way of thinking, maybe, and then having all of those key individuals around the table at our elementary level, middle level, and high school level to look at what that impact would be at each level has been very beneficial. And so for us, that particular piece has worked for us. And then we have worked with our nurses and with the Albany County Department of Health with getting the test, making sure that we're ready to start the weekly testing. And we've also worked with our nurses so that they understand their role with regard to how it's going to be conducted, because basically, it's every day there will be a certain amount of, because we can't test everyone in one day, but we can accomplish it weekly by building, because we will divide out each day. In terms of absences, we've not seen any absences that have been out of the ordinary. However, we do have a substitute shortage. And so if a significant number of our staff were out due to quarantining or COVID, then we would be challenged with regard to people coming in to cover, because our substitute coffers are not very full.
Okay. Thank you.
And I would just briefly echo what Bob said about the fact that there are varying.
Can you put your mic up a little closer?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you?
I just would echo what Bob said, that there are varying degrees of cooperation with regard to, you know, the county health departments, the districts. For the most part, in our districts, they work very well together. And frankly, I think one of the most significant issues has been the fact that neither has the personnel to implement this as smoothly and as easily as they would have liked. You know, the materials were available, but the staff to, for instance, perform the testing was not. So that was challenging, and it's not that the health departments were unwilling to work with us. It's they don't have the people, we don't have the people. So it's been difficult, but as the superintendent noted, our districts were working on this all throughout the summer, and they continue to face challenges, but we've been working closely with them, and the state has been very supportive to the extent they can with regard to figuring out how they can help us make this work.
Well, I want to thank you all for coming in, but I'll just leave you with this thought, and you can communicate later. When '23, '24 comes around and the federal money is not there, if you have any ideas as to how we're going to sustain the continued employment of people in order for our kids to get a good education, I'd be curious, not now, as to any suggestions you may have about that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Senator.
Thank you. Again, and thank you all for taking the time to come up and tell us about the state of what we're, well, I think what we all know, but it's good to hear it from what I call the Main Street, Main Street level. I'm a former bus driver. I worked back in the early '80s. I drove a bus in a rural district. I had roughly 50 students on board, my back to them. So I think it kind of started me, gave me the tools to be a senator, I believe, today, in many ways that I won't go into. But one of the things that I'd like to kind of expand upon, if I could, or delve into that Director Lowry brought up, is the shortage, again, of bus drivers. So my first question is, do we see a difference between, say, an urban district versus a rural district? Because I believe we would see more of a contracted transportation for urban versus, say, a rural, where I was directly hired, if you will, by the school district as a bus driver. So the first question is, are you seeing it, or are the challenges the same? Are we still seeing?
I can only speak, obviously, to the urban districts I represent, but I do need to note the fact that even among my districts, who are all facing significant challenges, the challenges are different. In central New York, for instance, there aren't as many vendors as there are in some other regions of the state. So Syracuse began the school year in what they thought was a pretty good position. They weren't, you know, thoroughly comfortable with the fact that they had a lot of subs, but they were doing okay. But unfortunately, in the last several weeks, they've lost. But unfortunately, in the last several weeks, they've lost, you know, several dozen bus drivers. So they are facing a significant challenge. So again, I would probably turn to Bob to speak to the issue relative to the rurals, but I do want to point out that there is a regional difference in New York State as well.
I'm really, I was asked around the week by a state government official, you know, about how to prioritize, and I said, "I can't tell you because..." We had our statewide conferences past weekend in Saratoga Springs. Every superintendent I speak with says, "We're worried about bus drivers." And some of them, they're getting, with the contracted service, some of them are getting text messages from their contractor 6:00 a.m. every day about whether they'll have enough drivers for that day. I don't know if there's a difference between districts that employ their bus drivers versus those that contract out. I don't really have a sense of that. I would say, you know, the districts where they employ them, they do have more direct control. But it just seems to be a concern virtually everywhere at this stage. And the governor did come out and take some actions to try and help with that. Some of it, I think, rests more with Washington, issues around requirements for a commercial driver's license, and we're continuing to work on those.
I'll address, if you don't mind, I'll address, we have had challenges as well. I don't fault our contractor. We work with First Student, and I think they have done everything humanly possible to ensure that we have enough drivers for all of our routes. However, if there are call-ins or resignations, and the substitute pool is not that deep, then, you know, so for example, if you, we have about 90 routes. If there are only a dozen substitutes, and if 15 people call out or resign, then I'm still, you know, I still don't have enough drivers. But I do know that, and it's not just in Albany, because in speaking with my colleagues this weekend at the same conference, many of them are looking at some of the same strategies. We have our companies that are bringing people in from other parts of the state to serve as drivers and to help facilitate that. But when they don't know the city, there are challenges now with timing of when the buses get there, and then if they're arriving at school on time. So it does present, it is a ripple effect with some of those challenges. It is important to note that these adjustments to our CDL licensing and being able to help people get those licenses, it is critical. And I think that is, no matter whether you are from an urban area or a rural area, if you don't have people licensed to drive the bus, then you are already starting behind the eight ball. And so I think those kinds of creative ideas and solutions are what we need in addressing our bus driver shortage.
And thank you. And I would also agree, as a former chair of Public Works in the county that I live in, we're also in competition with all the other looking for CDL, you know, qualified drivers. So I think the key to that, as you so eloquently put, is to look at what those requirements and how can we make that more desirable. I won't use the word "easy," but desirable would be the word, you know, to gain that pool of prospective drivers. And one of the other things, you know, being, again, from the rural district, it was a part-time job. I was self-employed, so it did have, for me, the big reason I did what I did was for the benefit, was for the health benefit that, as a self-employed individual, it helped. So it may not always be truly the, what I call, the upfront money that is attractive. It can be, or could be looked at, is what else can we offer as far as, you know, a package? I just throw that out as a personal experience again. So again, thank you for your time. Thank you for educating me on that as well. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Oberoch. Any other questions? No?
Thank you all to the panelists. Special thank you to you, Madam Superintendent, for making it through this year, and good luck in the coming school year. I would say my father-in-law was a rural school bus driver. It was a great job at one time for a retired person. I think the world has changed for those people, and I know that we have been trying to work with the governor's office to come up with some interim solutions. They're not perfect. We do need some federal help, but I hope, I hope we can help you address those shortages. But thank you for being here. Thank you for speaking about this. Is everyone okay with a 10-minute break, my colleagues? Okay. And then we're going to have New York State PTA Director Kyle Belikopitsky and AQE Executive Director Jasmine Gripper. After that, New York State School Boards Association, Brian Fessler, ASBO Executive Director Brian Chniky, and New York State Rural School Association Director David Little. So it is 1:19. We will try to reconvene at 1:30.
That's 11:00.
Oh, what?
We are reconvening this Senate Committee on Education, New York City Education and the Budget and Revenue hearing here in Albany today on September 30th. We are up to Panel Four. Thank you for everyone's patience. New York State PTA Executive Director Kyle Belikopitsky and AQE Executive Director Jasmine Gripper. Ladies, pleasure to see you both. Thank you for your advocacy, and I, whatever your order is, go right ahead.
Okay. We're going to get started. So I have to start by saying, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to the Senate for your leadership and finally committing to fully funding foundation aid. The parents, the students of New York City are really grateful for having this funding coming and preventing that fiscal cliff that so many people are talking about. We know that when you wrote this law, you wrote in parent engagement to be a part of the process. So thank you. But we know the reality of it is districts did hit and miss when it came to parent engagement, which is why AQE did a survey and we did a report with our findings, we demand, which is included in our testimony, that lays out what parents wanted to see with the uses of the new federal and state funding. The number-one priority was focusing on social and emotional support for students and reducing class sizes. We found that many districts did release the plans by July 1st, but plans were really vague. They lacked the details that we needed to hold districts fully accountable, and also it was hard to have to comb through every district's website to find those plans, and so having a centralized place for plans would be really important. We need accountability to be ongoing. It's not a one-and-done thing. It's something that we have to continue to do. Like many districts talked about how they use the funding for summer learning and summer rising, but how are we measuring that those programs were successful? What impact did it have on students who attended those programs? Was there an academic or a social-emotional benefit for students who attended summer programming? Also, districts talked about how they were going to have social and emotional supports for students. Yet districts have also been fearful of hiring because they're worried about long-term funding. And so again, districts' plans were really vague and didn't actually clarify how they were planning to meet some of the goals that they outlined in those plans. The other thing we found that was really important is that foundation aid, when it was created, also we created the Contract for Excellence. But the legislature did not unfreeze the mandates for the Contract for Excellence. So when we followed up with districts about plans to reduce class sizes, districts said they did not have to comply with the Contract for Excellence because the legislature did not unfreeze the requirement. So we hope that going forward, you will mandate districts to comply with the Contract for Excellence as they're getting to their 100% of their foundation aid amount. We also do have a concern about the ongoing foundation increases going to charter schools, which is something we'll explore with you in the near future. A part of my testimony also includes these one-pagers that highlights what's happening in some districts around the state. Again, the green are things that were highlighted as priorities by parents when we did our survey and our report. The red are things that were missing from plans. We pull out exactly what districts say they were going to do to match that category, but again, it is really vague. We're hoping that the new plans that SCD is requiring will require some more details for us to hold districts accountable. This money is absolutely essential. We never thought we would be at a point where districts would have so much cash available to them, so in order to meet the needs of students and families. But we're deeply concerned about parent engagement. We're deeply concerned about ongoing accountability. We don't want to get into year two of the funding and realize a program was wrong. We want to be able to catch how our spending is going and catch it right away and make sure we're monitoring along the way. We hope that you all will continue to hold districts accountable, ask districts to come here themselves and speak. It was great to hear from Albany directly. We need to hear from all districts that same way about how they're spending the money, how they're using the dollars, and ask them to really get to the details of what's being used and to continue to keep parents and families at the table throughout the whole process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Kyle McCauley Belikopitsky, Executive Director of the New York State Congress of Parents and Teachers, and I'm proud to represent our nearly 250,000 members and the parents and families of our 2.6 million school children, and always so great to share a table with our dear friends from AQE. New York State PTA truly appreciates the opportunity to comment on the use of these funds. Thank you especially, of course, the Senator Mayer and Lou and your colleagues for sitting here today to really hear this important conversation. Just a short reflection. The past 18 months have been truly challenging for our schools, our leaders, educators, teachers, related professionals, and most importantly, our students. Schools had to nearly overnight transform into a new learning model, never attempted before on a large-scale, statewide scale. Teachers had to transform instruction and connect with students both synchronously and asynchronously differently, to varying degrees of success, trying to identify those individual learning opportunities for students. Parents and families, many struggling with underemployment, unemployment, food insecurity, illness, lack of technology access and broadband in their own work schedules, had to find ways to help their children learn and figure out, especially for younger children, childcare as school buildings remain closed and as schools remained open. Students, the true educational heroes alongside our teachers in this pandemic, really had to learn to navigate an entirely new educational world, one filled with uncertainty and worry. But yet, while the past 18 months have been challenging, we watch teachers and educators do amazing things for our students. We witnessed school counselors support students and staff in their mental health in unique and incredible ways. We saw families come together to support each other, their children. We saw PTAs and parents across the state run everything from food drives to health insurance signups. And we saw school communities really and truly work together to support every child. We have to, from the bottom of our PTA heart, thank you, each and every one of you, for your commitment to public education. The historic, and I want to repeat that, the historic school aid increase, coupled with an infusion of needed federal resources, are truly helping our schools, especially after years of fiscal cuts and uncertainty for many districts. In education funding, as you're aware, the American Rescue Plan invested $170.3 billion in funding for education. The ARPA, American Secondary Schools Emergency Relief Act, invested another $125 billion for K-12 state education agencies. And as a reminder, 20% of those funds by the LEA, or our local education agency, must be addressed to a learning loss. Very fantastic. Schools were required to submit a plan for use of federal funds, and it's important to know, and I know you've asked this question a number of times, schools did solicit feedback from parents in varying ways and varying families across the state. It was hit or miss. Some school districts asked for online meetings, they did parent surveys, they did emails, they had other electronic connection means, and it was very hard, honestly, to connect with many parents because we were really still in the middle of the pandemic, and that was difficult. Some schools did a great job. All schools did try. It was really, really welcomed, and something that I know is, we would both agree, has to continue. During the pandemic, if you remember, back in 2020 summer, schools were required then by Governor Cuomo to solicit family feedback by at least three different times on their reopening plans. This is really something that we hope can be embedded continually in legislation and in regulation, where we have like an affirmative commitment by school districts that they have to engage parents and families a certain number of times or in certain ways on these very important decisions. We need continued conversations between school leaders, educators, classroom teachers, school-related professionals, and parents and families on really how best to support students. We are renewed by the commitment by our schools of the use of these funds, as evidenced by many colleagues from our fantastic groups. Schools are using funds for things like AIS and supporting for learning loss, meaningful commitments to mental health for students and educators, intervention and support strategies for students with disabilities, a real unique and critical population that truly had heightened difficulties in serving during the pandemic. Often, especially for some of our students with disabilities, remote instruction did not work. So AIS, especially our students with disabilities, is very critical, in addition to AIS and supports for English-language learners. Again, supports for homeless students and foster care, we're seeing schools really up those resources, which is fantastic. Supports for high-need students and those living in poverty, and again, technology and device support and tech equity for students and families, amongst others. Specifically on mental health, you know, we really have to work together as a school community to ensure our staff and students are supported. I'm very happy to see our colleagues from the School Counselors Association testifying later today. And just some real sobering statistics that I hope we all remember, half of all mental health disorders actually begin by the age of 14. Half of lifetime cases of anxiety begin by the age of 8. My son himself was diagnosed when he was 6 by his high school counselor in his school building. More than 1/4 of students experience a serious mental health in any given year, and sadly and alarmingly, during the pandemic and pandemic closures, suicidal ideation increased exponentially. So something that we all have to focus on. I'll wrap up by offering just some thoughts on other areas that I think we need to focus on, on this new funding and funding moving forward. Closing achievement gaps, still a huge problem in our state. You know, while SCD does a fantastic job, our schools do a fantastic job trying to close achievement gaps, it has to be of our highest priority. AP, IB, and college credit opportunities are varied greatly amongst our school districts. Some of our urban and some of our rural schools have, and I know Dave Little will be testifying later about our rural schools, have very distinct and different opportunities than some of our other traditional schools. Enrichment. Enrichment, and just like AIS, they both got dropped during the pandemic. Nice to see enrichment programs coming back. CTE, again, have to continue to focus on CTE. Music and arts education, oh. So during the pandemic, unfortunately for many reasons, music and arts education, especially music education, wind instruments, instruments and vocal became very difficult for school districts. We really have to have a renewed focus on music and arts education. Recovery high schools and substance use intervention services. Again, during the pandemic, we saw instances of substance use disorders by, unfortunately, school students, again, increase exponentially, something we all have to focus on. Restorative practices and diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives has to be a priority of all of our associations and all of our school districts right now, so, so critical. Meaningful family engagement practices, as both AQE and I have mentioned, we really have to continue to engage families and have these meaningful conversations. School safety, digital equity for students, including free broadband access, and I know many of you have fantastic bills and legislation on this. We hope that this past year's $15 broadband for low-income families, can we move to a free broadband service for low-income families? And of course, health and wellness initiatives. We understand that sometimes engaging families is very difficult. They are our members, they are wonderful, they want to be engaged. I know we, I know AQE, I know many of the other parent advocates are ready to stand to help any school district, any school building, and certainly the legislature have that engagement with families in many different ways. Through our many New York State PTA support initiatives, we offer things like free translation services for any New York State school or community group. We offer free help for any family looking for food security. We can help you fill out your SNAP or your WIC applications. We can help you enroll your child in health insurance. So these are the types of programs that the many parent and family advocates are doing to support students. And again, that just goes to a continued expansion of our community model for schools, which we all support. It is our proud 125th anniversary this year. Know that PTA plans to be around for another 125 years to serve our students, and together we will shine a light on every child. There is no more important work. Thank you so much for this time.
Thank you both. Thank you both for speaking up for families. Ms. Gripper, I have a few questions. You have these really very thoughtful, district-specific documents that are attached here, one for Rochester, Buffalo, Kingston, Utica, and Albany, about their plans or about encouraging parent involvement, and give me some specifics. One is, what was the timing of these? Were these pre the requirement of the filing, or are these ongoing?
These were created in response to what districts released in their July 1 plans.
Prior to that?
After they released the July 1 plans, we created these documents to summarize them to make it parent-friendly, because parents didn't have the time to read through the plans.
Okay. So after the plan was put out, then you engaged as much as possible to encourage parents and family members. And one of the challenges that I am concerned about particularly, it exists in the city of New York, and I know we're going to have a separate hearing on that, but outside the city of New York and communities that are majority-minority, I represent Portchester, for example, a district that is 70% Latino, and until now, no one on the Board of Education spoke Spanish. So having communities where the board or the leadership of the school may not be representative of the parent population poses challenges that you both have mentioned. What specific steps in order to ensure that all parents and all families have a voice in this plan, and that was our goal, would you recommend if we are to modify the law or strengthen it going forward to ensure that this parent voice, family voice continues to be part of the process? to be part of the process?
Yeah, we found that most districts did, really did try to reach parents. There were very few, and I'm going to be honest, like Utica School District, when parents approached the district and said, hey, we heard you had to do parent engagement, can we have a seat at the table, let's talk about it? The superintendent and the school board were really resistant and actually created barriers to parent participation. And so for the most part, I think districts did a good job of trying to reach parents, but there are barriers. Technology creates a barrier when you create an online survey and parents don't have technology at home. Language becomes a barrier if you don't offer the survey in multiple languages. And then when they did do some meetings, again, Zoom meetings, then technology becomes a barrier as well, as well as the timing of the meetings, because parents work on traditional hours. And so we need to make sure we, the requirement for parents to participate just needs to be strengthened with some hardcore requirements to go along with them, as opposed to a strong suggestion where there's no, there was no teeth to that requirement. And so a district that didn't comply, there's no recourse for that noncompliance except public shaming, and that's just not enough.
Yes, understood. Thank you for doing this survey of families, parents. I think it's one of the few indicia that we have of what parents in this moment thought was necessary, and it's not inconsistent with what schools and staff thought, but support staff and mental health was regarded as the largest in your responses, 30%, followed by smaller class size. Did you find that the plans of the communities that you looked at were basically responsive, I suspect, on support staff and mental health? Yes?
Mostly, yeah, mostly, many districts did say they were going to prioritize mental health and supports. Again, the details of how they were going to do that, were they going to hire more counselors, when and what the timeframe was that was not exactly clear. The same with reducing class sizes. Some districts specifically said they were going to hire more teachers or elementary school teachers, which were great, but also their class sizes have been ballooning across the state for years. We know buildings, even in New York City, where they're at 200% capacity. And so how are we reducing class sizes in a really short timeframe without building more school buildings, which honestly is necessary in some communities? So schools are making an attempt, but there's a teacher shortage. And so there's a lot of things that make things complicated for the execution of some of these really good ideas. And so class sizes is one, where we think districts have good intent, but we're not sure how the execution is going to be impacted or followed through, so that we can see an outcome that really reduces class sizes in New York State.
Thank you very much. Kyle, I had one question, just so people understand. So the New York State PTAs represents parents and teachers in how many of the state's districts? Do you know?
We have units in 1,500 school buildings. So we generally represent many of the schools outside of New York City. New York City Family of Community Engagement represents their own parent associations. They have a different system in New York City. And then we generally represent many schools, most schools, outside of New York City.
And with respect to parents of special needs children, many of your chapters have a SEPTA or special needs?
Yeah, so we have both traditional parent-teacher associations, and then we have what's called a Special Education Parent-Teacher Association that focuses on unique needs of serving parents of students and families of students with disabilities.
So to Senator Lou's earlier question about this, did you survey or do you have a sense from those parents whose kids experienced probably greater loss than students with that special needs?
We have, and we can send that to you, Senator Lou. What we found during?
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. Let me just finish. I'm sorry.
Senator.
First place, I think we all want it.
Okay, great.
Not to Senator Lou. But two is, my question is whether the parents of these children identified their greatest priorities for the use of any additional funds that have come into the school system.
Yeah, and we have not asked that, but we're happy to survey our SEPTAs on that information. The information we have from our special education PTAs has been consistent with what you've heard from my other colleagues. Parents are very worried about the type of instruction during, when we went remote. They were worried that IEPs, their individual education plans of their students were not being met really in any meaningful way. Not negatively against a school district at all, but it was very difficult in a fully remote capacity to really serve many students with disabilities. Now, I will tell you, we've heard some families that their student preferred remote instruction, especially for some on the spectrum, that it was a better way for their child to learn. So it was really interesting. So we heard from families on both sides of the equation that they really did poorly under just a true remote instruction opportunity, but then many families saw their child flourish. So it was interesting to see.
I think it would be useful for us in thinking about next year's budget, where we clearly have to continue to address this. I know for children who have physical therapy, speech or occupational therapy, the loss of in-person therapy really had consequences. I would be very interested in seeing what your SEPTA parents say are the priorities so that we can see if we can incorporate them.
Absolutely, and we'll get that information to you.
Thank you very much. Senator Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Senator Mayor asked many of the questions I had already, so thank you. No, it's totally fine. Saves me the trouble, Madam Chair. I do want to thank both of your organizations, because although you were generous in thanking us for securing the foundation aid increases, it was your organizations that really empowered us and in some cases, I don't know, for lack of a better term, whipped us into submission. So we got it done in large part because of your efforts as well. My comments to your testimony would be that I think it's good that both of your organizations are, you know, you're looking at some of the metrics and standards and specific uses for the foundation aid. I speak for myself, and you know, perhaps some of my colleagues share this, we're a legislative body, you know, I'm a politician. I don't claim to be a teacher or a professional educator, although I do teach. I leave that up to the State Education Department. Our foundation aid that we provide in the state budget is supposed to be no strings attached. And so that no strings attached doesn't totally mean no strings attached. The schools have to conform and comply with the educational standards of this state, not set by us, but set by the regents and by the State Education Department. And so I largely leave it to the State Education Department to determine what those requirements are, what the syllabus requirements are, what the metrics required, the required metrics are, and to the extent that you have things that you believe school districts should be prioritizing in their foundation aid, which again, is supposed to be no strings attached. I think those are discussions that we should be having with the State Education Department. Maybe they need to make those requirements on the school districts and the individual schools throughout the state. But I personally hesitate to make those kinds of political judgments on what schools and school districts should be doing in the absence of the State Education Department, who are the, you know, the educational professionals getting involved and signing off on those kinds of requirements. And that's true, I would say that's true of pretty much all of the situations that you cite in your testimony, including parental engagement, including class sizes, including racially diverse curricula, all of those things, we need to involve the State Education Department.
And we would agree, Senator, and I have to say that Dr. Rose is such a fantastic partner with the education community. I know we, the communication between SED and really everyone here that's testified has, is fantastic, and we're so thankful for their partnership as well. And I think it's very important to have these conversations with multiple parties so we can come together. Districts do a fantastic job. As you mentioned, local control amongst regulation is very important as well. And together, as I said, SED, you all and our fantastic districts, our teachers, principals, school board members, you know, together we'll get it done for kids.
I agree with taking the lead from the State Education Department, but there may be some legislative requirements along the way. And the Contract for Excellence was originally designed to hold districts accountable with the spending of foundation aid. And so again, identifying proven-to-work strategies that districts should be investing in to meet the needs of students. And SED can do some enforcement, but sometimes they take their guidance from the legislature. So we may need to collaborate on a comprehensive solution for all these issues.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, ladies.
First, let me thank you for coming in and giving testimony on behalf of AQUE and the New York State Parents Association. It's extremely important that we hear from activists on the ground and parents that are involved in their children's education. I know that because I, going back from my history, I was the president of a parents' association and president of the school board, and you know, that's how I got involved in understanding how important education is to our children. My girls are now young adults, three of them, and I'm sure that the over, all of the children in New York State, I'm their father, and I'm going to fight for them wherever they may go to school, understanding that I know how important education is. And so I ask you this. You've heard the testimony earlier, and the issues and concerns of transparency, especially the Part A and Part One and Part Two, making sure that the parents are in there and activists are in there and not at the tail end when you just find out there's stuff in there that you don't, that you don't agree with. So we need transparency all the way through in order so that you can continuously give your input from the various organizations, and you heard me say that, to the unions and others, and so that it's shaped the way it should be shaped, and not because several people in a room decided that this is how it's going to be. And I'd say that loud and clear, because your involvement is extremely important. But also, I want you to think about, as I said to other panels, think about '23, '24, when they say that the federal money is going to be gone, and we must continue to provide the best education we can for our children. And if you know that, that may mean additional revenue. And where's that revenue going to come from? In my opinion, based on the little that I know about upstate school districts and what have you, and how money is raised by school taxes and taxing the people, and when people have suffered for almost 18, 19 months and it's continuing, I think that the state of New York and the federal government, we're going to have to bang on their doors again, and not at the last minute, but continuously, in order to make sure that we have what we need to provide our children that type of education. So that's what I wanted to say to you. I want to be able to thank you from my heart, knowing that you are the ones that are pushing us to do what we have to do. And I appreciate both of you staying the course, and I'm going to be with you all the way. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Jackson.
And Senator, I would be remiss if I didn't mention to Senators Jackson and Lou that we have a fantastic Queens community-based PTA that supports parents and families in Queens, and we're happy to connect them with you.
Thank you, Senator Brooks.
What about me, Anna? Because that's the R.J.'s.
We'll, I know, we'll get there. We have four more boroughs to go, and we could use that help. So we'll call your office.
R.J.'s the parent, is the father of all school.
That's fantastic.
Some people might take that the wrong way, but we'll take it the right way.
I'll put it on the to-do list. It is on the to-do list.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I just would, with the comments to Robert, I think your involvement in education, obviously critical. I spent many years on the school board, and I think the PTAs as a whole were a very important sounding board. You know, if we, if we hold our breath for a minute and look back the last 18 months or so, the pandemic has exposed many, many issues that have to be addressed. I think mental health in some ways is something we've always known has been there and not taken the time to look at it, and now it's screaming at us. And I think we have to look at that. I think, you know, without starting another debate here, I think there are a lot of inequities in how we fund education that are now presenting certain problems, which are compounded by certain federal laws. But I think we have the opportunity now. We know there's some funding coming from the federal government. We have a bridge we can build, thinking about our future. What has to be addressed? How can we fund it? How can we change the way we fund things? I think sometimes we don't recognize.
Francis Paluszinski.
Sorry. Sometimes we don't recognize how significantly different regional cost factors are. We underevaluate the impact on that. One of the things I see on Long Island from district to district in particular is the difference between those communities that have a commercial property tax base and those that don't. And many of the districts that had trouble with their budgets last year were those districts that had no commercial tax base. So I think, you know, we're in a period right now where we really can take and make a list of things we have to look at, take an honest look, realize there's a bit of time, realize this pandemic is going to still be with us, at least through this school year as best we can see, and that it's going to have influence. But I think your organizations are so critically important to that process, and I think we need to take a step back and reexamine how certain things are done. And I think, again, the mental health issue is screaming at us right now, and we've got to give some very, very serious thought to it. So I thank you for your ongoing involvement. Keep it up. I think, I think in the years ahead, we need to work collectively as a team, put things on the table. We need to listen sometimes as much as we talk to see where we are. But, you know, I'm sorry I wasn't able to get with this entire hearing today. I had to turn something else also, but this is important. And if, the one thing I hear day in and day out from everybody is a concern for mental health right now. So I think that's got to be high on our list as we, as we set new priorities. But I thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, Senator Brooks, and thank you both. And one thing that we haven't focused on enough in this hearing, but I do want to acknowledge that it's very much part of the work of both of you, and certainly AQUE, is the full funding of foundation aid was not just a promise to every district. It was very much a product of a very inequitable system that provided far better financial suiting or footing to districts that had a tax base or wealthier parents and a wealthier community. And it was this fundamental commitment to equity that I know, although Majority Leader is not here, was driving her insistence that we get to this point. And I'm hopeful that you will continue to have a focus on equity. Every school child deserves the best regardless of where they live, but some have the advantage of having districts where people can pay high property taxes. We do need a better system. I agree with Senator Brooks, it's something we should look to, having a more equitable system, but in the interim, we can't lose our focus on the disparity in funding and in opportunity. And this was an effort to begin to address that. So I want to thank you both for your focus on that as the lens with which we see school funding. And clearly, this year really tested us on fundamentals inequity. So thank you. We look forward to continuing to partner with you. I know I speak for all my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here. We appreciate it.
Thank you for having us. Thank you for being patient, too.
And for this conversation early. I think it's very helpful.
Yes, it's not that early. The money, some of the money is going out the door. So Panel Five, New York State School Boards Association Director of Governmental Relations, Brian Fessler, ASBO Executive Director, Brian Getchicknicki, and New York State Rural Schools Association Director, David Little. Three patient gentlemen, thank you for being here. Nice to see you all. Oh, okay, good. Good afternoon, and I leave it to you all to decide who goes first. You're also courteous. I'm sure one of you can agree to go first.
Be happy to. I apologize for not being named Brian, Senator. And as Bob Lowry said, I too would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that the Rural Schools Association's State Leader of the Year is your chair today. And that's largely based on the Herculean efforts that all of you, spearheaded by Senator Mayor, undertook these last few years to make sure that, that full funding has been promised. That said, I want to delve into a little bit the fact that it's a, it's a multi-year commitment, and we have been at this place in history before, and not that long ago, a dozen or so years ago, where full funding was even court ordered, let alone promised. Senator Jackson certainly knows about that situation. And yet, when the economy turned around, which it's, you know, want to do in cycles, we weren't able as a state to fulfill that commitment. And so the first thing that I would say is that we prioritize within our spending over the next few years to make sure that that promise is kept this year. And the second point that I would make, made in the testimony that you have written for me, is that this was, as much as me, is that this was, as much as it was an attempt at equity, it was successful more at adequacy than it was at equity. Many of the rural schools, which comprise nearly half of the school districts in this state, in this, even in this historic financial environment, where, again, starting the year thinking we would be subjected to 20% aid cuts and walking away with both federal and and state aiding increases was a fantastic result, but at the same time, not shared equally, and in many cases, shared incredibly inequity, inequitably. Here locally, the richest school districts in the capital district received the largest state aid increases under that proposal. Rural school districts, largely because of enrollment declines, are considered to be fully funded under the formula despite the fact that they are financially struggling to the nth degree. And yet, they received inflationary increases rather than increases that would allow them to make substantive changes to their program. Even there, they're trying to rebuild things that were cut over years of inadequate funding, and they've lost their local tax bases, as Senator Brooks has mentioned. The local tax base in New York State is what differentiates us from having this incredibly ironic position among states where we spend the most per child, and yet we are, year after year, listed as having the most inequitable distribution system for that aid because largely we put so much of it on the backs of the local community to support that. And when the local community doesn't have resources, really difficult for for students. Rural schools have lost perhaps a third of their population. Rural New York has lost more than a million people in the last census. And I just draw your attention to this policy brief that talks about that rural exodus being second only to the Dust Bowl in the Great Depression. New York State's exodus from its rural areas is second in U.S. history to only that event. And yet, we don't have a plan to address that. And certainly, we have to go beyond simply saying, for the number of students you've got, the amount of money that you are going to receive, and again, very grateful that many of them received 3% instead of 2%, that was specific to them, and they are indeed grateful for that. But we are talking about years of underfunding, and I know that this focus is on the accountability for the money that has been provided. And yet, I don't want us to lose focus on the fact that as we move forward, the work isn't over yet to bring these rural schools back to an ability to make their students competitive. Fully three-quarters of every high school graduate, and the beauty of rural schools is that they graduate almost everybody. You know, it really does take the whole village, and the whole village does it. And they graduate almost everybody. And yet, almost 75% of those students never even receive a two-year degree beyond high school. And there aren't jobs for them to come back to. So this state is facing a crisis within the next few years that will be dramatic. And so I would suggest that as we move forward, we do our best to try and address the inadequacies of the current formula. It was a choice. It was both a political and social choice to fully fund the existing formula rather than to update and create a new formula. And we have to acknowledge that there are things in that current formula, the existence of English-language learners, the increased degree of student poverty. These things have to be upgraded from and reassessed from almost 15 years ago now that the formula takes into account currently. So there's still work left to do, and I want to thank you for the wonderful work that's been done so far. And with that, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Sure. Go ahead, Senator.
Sure. Good afternoon. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony today on behalf of the 670 school board member districts that we serve across the state. I want to start my comments with a lot of what you've heard today, a sincere and serious thank you. In a period of about 12 months, even ignoring all of the health and safety concerns and challenges associated with the pandemic, school districts went from a 2021 state budget that was adopted with relatively flat state funding, supported in part by the first round of federal stimulus dollars, to almost immediately being warned by the administration about the potential for upwards of a 20% state aid cut mid-year, which would have equated to about $5 billion statewide, all the way to a 2122 state budget that increased traditional school aid by more than $3 billion and allocated about $12 billion in additional federal stimulus funding. It really is an understatement to say that state leaders, you and your colleagues, turned one of the most dire school funding situations in decades into one of incredible promise and opportunity. Now, beyond the dollars, the budget also included, as we've heard, a commitment to fully fund the now 15-year-old foundation aid formula that was representative of one of NISBA's top school funding priorities over the past decade. In particular, NISBA was very pleased that the increase in foundation aid in 2122 applied to all districts, recognizing that all districts face increasing operational costs each year, especially during the pandemic, and that the increase included a floor of percentage formula funding to support some of the state's most chronically underfunded districts. This in particular is the strategy for which NISBA has advocated for in recent years. Now, in conversations with our member districts to answer the questions for the hearing here today, we have seen that school districts across the state have engaged with school staff, students, and community stakeholders in order to develop spending approaches that best fit the needs of their local school community. They focus spending, as we've heard a lot here today, on technology, from enhancing broadband capabilities to upgrading and expanding device usage, increasing before-and-after-school learning opportunities, some enrichment programs, and new U.P. K.C.s. Beyond that, school districts have been able to invest in social emotional supports for students by way of school psychologists and social workers, professional development for staff to better recognize students who are experiencing challenges, and even digital programs that assess mental well-being of students each day and can provide tips on coping strategies. Finally, the effectiveness of these investments is measured and is being measured through formal assessments and diagnostics, surveys from students and staff, and through data on traditional aspects of student attendance, suspension rates, incident reports, and general student performance. Looking ahead, it's important that the legislature's statutory commitment to foundation aid be recognized as it's a necessary step towards achieving full funding. But at the same time, as we've heard today, we must acknowledge that there is some cautiousness and hesitancy that many districts are feeling and may be feeling around that commitment because, as we've heard, this is, we know this is not the first time that commitment has been made. As such, it's an absolute top priority of NISBA's that the full funding commitment be maintained in years two and three of the planned and beyond. Moving forward, with this plan and commitment finally in place, we do think it is appropriate and makes sense to take a look at the future of the formula and identify and review those aspects that can be updated, tweaked, improved, or otherwise adjusted. A number of those recommendations are in the written testimony that we've submitted, but those include improving data collection for measuring student poverty, updating the regional cost index, and accounting for the property tax cap in a district's expected local contribution as part of the formula. The state legislature deserves tremendous credit and appreciation for their efforts and your efforts to deliver and allocate this level of financial support to our school districts. In the short term, this funding allows school districts across the state to meet the health and safety needs of students and staff as in-person instruction returns. In the longer term, hundreds of school districts will now have the financial resources to address instances of learning loss and the health and mental health challenges brought on by the pandemic, and will be able to further invest in technology and introduce and build upon some of the programs and services that will benefit students for generations to come. NISBA looks forward to our continued work with you all and your colleagues and our members to help make sure that all of these opportunities become a reality. Thank you again for the chance to be here with you today.
Thank you, Brian.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Chechniki, and since January, I have been the Executive Director of ASBO New York, the Association for School Business Officials. And because I began this work during the pandemic, this is my first opportunity to appear before you in person, so I'm both happy to be here and grateful for the opportunity. I'd like to take just a few moments to highlight some of the key points from our written testimony. First, to echo many of my colleagues today, I want to thank the members of these committees and the legislature, along with your federal counterparts, for the historic investments that you've all made in education in the 2122 budget. The additional state and federal aid, combined with the commitment to fully phase in the foundation aid formula, came as a relief to districts who had been preparing for a potential 20% reduction in state aid just weeks earlier, as you've heard from many people today. Throughout the pandemic, school districts have served as community hubs, providing much-needed services to New Yorkers, such as providing meals, Wi-Fi internet hotspots, and childcare for first responders. We applaud the legislature for allocating funds to allow schools to continue this mission. With these investments made, ASBO New York's top priority has been ensuring that school district leaders have the tools necessary to maximize the impact of these historic investments. ASBO has worked with our membership and other stakeholders to provide best practices and tools to school district leaders to facilitate deliberate planning, thoughtful implementation, and thorough assessment of programming decisions. While school business officials are well-versed in the traditional budget requirements that are established in statute, the passage of the federal aid packages and the 2122 enacted budget placed additional administrative obligations on districts seeking to access this aid. Working together with our sister organizations, the State Education Department and the Office of the State Controller, ASBO held a series of webinars and virtual town hall-style meetings to ensure the effective dissemination of information regarding the new regulations throughout the state. These collaborative efforts also resulted in a series of frequently asked questions documents that proved invaluable throughout the federal grant process. In addition to the community engagement requirements that schools undertook with these funds, adopted plans for fund usage were required. In order to promote uniformity and transparency in these plans, ASBO released a template for school districts to use in publishing them. Thanks to your thoughtful recognition of the need for flexibility in fund usage, school districts have employed various strategies to address the needs of their students, resulting from the disruptive nature of the COVID-19 pandemic. These have included expanding summer school programming for all students, extended day learning programs, comprehensive after-school programs, hiring additional mental health staff, expanded student nutritional programs, and making investments in technology to ensure that learning extends beyond the physical classroom. Even before the pandemic, many of our members were engaged with the curriculum development personnel in their districts to ensure that funds have the desired impact on student needs, including learning outcomes. The general approach for this collaborative work entails selecting target populations, defining success, identifying comparison groups, collecting segment and outcome data, mapping the costs, evaluating program effectiveness, analyzing cost effectiveness, and then drawing conclusions. ASBO will be continuing our work to ensure that our professional development programming on collaboration with curriculum development and implementation continues. While we are excited by the opportunities these funds present, I would be remiss to not mention some of the challenges that districts will face. Across the three significant federal investments, CARES, CERSA, and ARP, districts must engage in an application and budget approval process, and then generally spend that money in the first instance to receive reimbursement later. These procedures can have the potential of impacting cash flow in districts as they create and expand these programs that we have outlined. While the significance of the investments made at both the federal and state level this year have helped mitigate this issue, ASBO looks forward to working together on the opportunity in to future opportunities and funding considerations to consider payment alternatives that can lessen this cash flow impact. In order to maintain these programs and achieve the desired educational outcomes, school districts must have the resources needed. Beyond the federal investments, ASBO applauds the commitment by the state for the scheduled phase-in to fully fund foundation aid. We urge the legislature to remain vigilant and committed to this plan. By providing certainty to school districts regarding future funding levels, the state can ensure that communities can make necessary investments in staff and other programmatic resources without relying on nonrecurring funds. I thank you for your time today, and even more, thank you for your commitment to educating the children of New York State.
Thank you. Thank you all. I know Senator Brooks had a question before he has to leave, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to question and point. You know, we get into a situation as we look at school funding, and it's difficult at the end how we do things. In many districts where I live, there's a significant over-dependence on property taxes to fund education. Many communities that have basically no commercial property tax base right now are paying 70-plus percent of the cost of education by means of property taxes. Property taxes, as we all know, basically work based on the assessed value of a home, the market value of a home. It's not reflective of the assets these people, the financial condition they're in. And then here in New York, we're coupled with the penalty of the SALT tax, which these people are doing. So I think we we really have to realize that the tax cap we have is not a tax cap at all in the end. It's a lid on an adjustment in the taxes that are already in place. And for so many districts where I deal with, people are leaving New York State because of those taxes. We saw in the last year an assessment change in Nassau County in particular, there's been a problem with the assessments. And assessments in Nassau County change constantly because of the number of challenges that are made. And we had a situation where I had seniors that moved into a senior development that was put out, what was to be a low-cost senior development, and they got tax increases in excess of $10,000 a year in that adjustment. So my point here is, we do have to look at how we're funding education. We do have to look at how fair, really, the assessed value is a home. You know, when we when we set the rules up years ago, people generally bought a house and hoped to pay it off after 30 or 40 years and be able to stay there the rest of the house. As time moved, the house became a bargaining chip for financial adjustments, taking equity warrants, this, that, and the other. We have seniors, I have seniors in my town, that their annual taxes now are more than they bought the house for, more than they bought the house for. They can't go to the tax office and make a tax payment with the bedroom window. The only way they get the equity of the house is, obviously, to sell it or take a loan. So they're not in a position. So I don't disagree with your concerns at all with upstate, and I've talked with many people upstate, but I think we have to realize that our funding system is inequitable in many ways. And if we don't straighten that out, we're going to have difficulty looking at some of these things that are in place.
All I can tell you, Senator, speaking for the choir that you've been preaching to, is that we've recognized this forever. The very reason why New York State is always deemed to be the most inequitable is because we rely so heavily on the property tax and and local taxes, and there's not a more systemic statewide approach. In virtually every other state in the Union, about two-thirds of the amount necessary to pay for public education is paid for by the state. And if you want something over and above it of the basics that the state pays for, and your community can afford that, God love you. Right? In New York State, it's almost the reverse. Two-thirds is paid for at the local level, while the state picks up about a third. The total is wonderful. The total of those combined assets is wonderful. But the distribution of that, as you say, is largely dependent, and it has the unanticipated consequence of driving people out of their homes when it's driven that. I can just tell you that on the island, they they talk about how high their assessments are. Their tax rate is about half of what it is in many upstate communities. But in those upstate communities, they're, they have a lower assessment. If the taxes are higher, you have a higher assessment. The taxes are lower. I don't want to be crass, but this is my 38th year of being involved in either this or working in this body on these issues, and I can tell you that I have never been to any place in New York State that didn't believe that they were screwed by the school aid formula.
And I will I will concur with what you just said. And I had, I was up a number of years ago, up in the northern regions of the state, had an opportunity to play golf with a teacher who explained how how my taxes were less than his. I said, "What are you paying?" He says, "2,500 a year." I says, "I'm paying 13,000." He says, "Yeah, but yours are less than mine as a percentage of the assessment value." My point here is, we have to take a look at something. I think I think we've got to consider putting a tax cap based on the percentage of funding to the district. In some ways, that takes into consideration regional cost factors. But there's a lot of work to be here, done here. And I know that you're hurting up in the northern regions, and we are hurting down on the island, particularly when you put the SALT tax on top of what it is. And I think we all have to come together and recognize we've got to find a better way. So I thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Brooks. Senator Jackson.
First, I want to thank you all for coming in and staying the course, and I hope you were here from the beginning. here from the beginning, and you may have heard the testimony of the Commissioner and all others. And let me just say, especially David from the rural, I appreciated your straightforward, candid testimony on behalf of your people that you represent in rural New York. Obviously, I'm from New York City, so that's not rural. That's the most urban location probably almost in the world, but I say to you, it's important to hear, and also I have the report that was issued concerning that, and so I'm going to read that in detail, because I heard what you had to say. And as someone that is interested in not just New York City, not just Manhattan, but the entire state, when I talk, it's about all of us together. And so it's important that you should know that. And I've asked other people and panels about, think about, you know, the monies for education from the feds and from foundation aid, 2324. How are we going to maintain that? And obviously, based on what I'm hearing, there's not going to be local taxes for people as John Brooks talked about that are struggling just to survive, and now their property tax has gone up so much because of funding for education. And I think that you or Brian, right?
Yeah, both of us, either way.
Brian.
Brian.
That the rest of the states around the country, it's about two-thirds is from the state, and I think you said about one-third is from local, and I think we've got to get there. We have a governor now that seems to be listening to what everyone has to say, and hopefully that all of us working together, we can change that formula in order to make it work for all of us. And I know that the New York State School Board Association was involved in the campaign for fiscal equity going way back, and so understanding how important education is for our children in New York State, regardless if they stay here or if they go elsewhere, education is going to be extremely important in their life. I thank all three of you for coming in, and I have your information. I'll be reading it and making reference to some of those when I'm in the hearing down in New York City Tuesday, when we're talking about New York City education. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Jackson. I have a sort of in-the-weeds question for each of you. And I appreciate Mr. Little, well, thank you for the award. It was really an honor to actually go in person and be among the rural schools. I really did appreciate it, and we are committed, as you know, to every child regardless of where they live. And we have challenges with the rural schools, we know. But you gave some good examples, which I really do appreciate in your testimony, of an effort to engage the school community. You went to a few. You mentioned Bloomfield, Montauk, Greater Johnstown. And it appeared to me primarily they answered, and these weren't the foundation aid side, this is more on the federal money, they used the school board as the place to get input, which I can appreciate in a rural school. I would ask each of you, and particularly you, Brian, on behalf of school boards, is there a better way for, not a better way, is there a more nuanced way to reach parents in communities where there are parents who have nothing to do with a school board, don't know anything about a school board, never went to a school board meeting, don't know where they are? I'm thinking of some of the communities I represent where the school board is sort of an alien concept, not something the parents deal with. They deal with maybe the PTA in their school district, their principal of their, particularly elementary school. My point is, for going forward, do you have thoughts on, frankly, more effective ways to reach a broad base of parents than simply relying on school boards? I understand in the rural community, I suspect many more people do know, and they probably actually vote on the school boards, but in my community, school board vote is extremely low. So I'm just be interested in that, question one. And question two, have any of you done a formal survey of your members as to who and how they complied with the federal reporting requirement? And my point on this is, I don't think any of you, maybe some of your school districts got the bigger share of foundation aid and have to do the other reporting, but I'd just be honest, we're not going to roll over on the reporting requirements and the inclusion of others. And I think to the extent that your voice is necessary in crafting modifications, I would encourage you to make a very concrete effort to reach out to your members and hear what they're doing about parent and family and stakeholder engagement so that we can improve going forward. Because I believe my colleagues are quite committed that there needs to be a broader discussion about when there's billions of dollars on the table than sort of those that traditionally make these decisions. So I didn't mean to make a speech, I just, two questions. One is, are school boards the only place people should go? And two, can you consider doing a survey of your members and actually doing a report on compliance with the federal requirement?
Yeah, I'll jump on the first one. So first, we always want more people involved in the process.
I know.
So that's from the get-go. I think certainly the school board meeting discussions are the most public and outward-facing components of this, but I'll stress anecdotally because to answer your second question, no, we have not done, at least at this point, a comprehensive survey. But the information that I had collected in preparation for this is, some of that process included community and parent surveys, and so kind of not public in the sense that, you know, we're all sitting in a room filling out the same piece of paper, but survey information going out to parents and community members. A lot of times, there are also kind of ad hoc planning groups, community groups and meetings to digest some of the survey information and serve in advisory capacity to the board. And so the board meetings and the board discussions often end up as kind of the final or one of the last steps in the process, much more open and public for everyone, or in some cases, not everyone, to attend. And so, yes, there are other components to that process, and a lot of that is based on kind of past practice in a district and what works best, and where people are comfortable in being involved, and especially over the past, you know, six, 12 months, how the district was operating in terms of board meetings, whether in-person or virtual. Sometimes, as we know, you know, kind of throughout school boards, local government meetings, sometimes the virtual meetings offered more convenient access, even if it wasn't in-person, between, you know, scheduling and timing and travel. Sometimes in-person generated and fostered a little bit better conversations. So the school board meetings, I think, were, at least anecdotally, just kind of one of the last, final, big, comprehensive steps in a process that often started with multiple pieces leading up to that board meeting.
I hear you, and I appreciate that. I'm just suggesting that one of you has suggested, we had a Zoom outreach, you know, to reach, you know, maybe 10 people showed up, but we invited the whole community. I'm just, I'd be interested in the response of what your districts did, and I appreciate you have concrete examples in the rural schools where I actually can understand that people know there's a board meeting, and maybe they follow or they vote on the board. But because turnout in school board elections is so infinitesimal, and there's a great removal between parents and board members, I'd like to encourage or at least survey to see if there's some more creative ideas for next year when we revise this. So I just throw, maybe, Brian, you have some thoughts on that?
Yeah, no, and we'd certainly be happy to, we've done some informal surveys, you know, in the last couple of months and in the lead-up to today's testimony, but we're happy to do that more formally. I think, piggybacking on some of Brian's points, one of the things that our members are focused on when it comes to preparing and finalizing the budget is, really, there's a lot of compliance exercise components to it, and I don't bring this up as a way to say that we shouldn't have reporting and transparency, but there is, you know, there's a 30-year calcification of reports that, you know, many governors, many legislative leaders over a 30-year period have sort of added to this. And I think from the school business perspective, there's a lot of time spent on simply checking those boxes to comply, and those same reports are really filtered through the lens of the school board sort of process and the final vote. And so I think there's an opportunity there. One of the things that we've been kicking around are some of these ideas of how can we streamline some of this reporting? And I think that's where the opportunity can be of sort of modernizing that reporting and turn it into something that is much more reachable beyond sort of the usual suspects that come to school board meetings. So, you know, we'd be very happy to work with you and your staff on brainstorming what that might look like in the future.
No, I appreciate that, and I think that's useful. There's a lot of reporting. There was never billions of extra dollars. It's a whole different ball of wax than what you got before, but I can appreciate that. And I would point out, you know, from Yonkers, there's not an elected school board. New York City doesn't have an elected school board. They're not always the representative places that we perceive in our civics way. So I think that it would be useful to have your input on the most effective ways to truly reach, outside of our own self-interested thing, the families that we represent, and frankly taxpayers and others who have opinions. So thank you for that, and I look forward to working with you on that. Any other questions? Senator Oberochra, Senator Lou? No? Yes, Senator Tedesco.
Thank you, Chairwoman. David, I want to talk to you a little bit about something we've talked about in the past. This is a nice booklet here, Forgotten Family Members, talking about rural district. The basic question is, is a one-size-fits-all process for funding and formulas working for our rural schools or our urban schools or even our suburban schools? I represent the 49th Senatorial District. All three of those municipalities and areas are in that. I go up into the Adirondacks. And you talk here, a lot of things relate to what I'm talking about, but need for flexibility in laws and regulations. I agree with you with that. But how about autonomy, and we've talked about this, and the use of funding in dollars? Do you know how many formulas we have to release funding to our school districts in New York State? I don't know personally. There's some guy in a closet somewhere who knows the formula and everything and how it works. But wouldn't it be a little bit better if we didn't have a one-size-fits-all because urban, rural, suburban, as you point out here, have different needs? And is there a need to us to be a little bit more specific on what we say schools in different areas and different regions can do with funding that really relates to them? Because the superintendents, the administration in these different areas, I think know best what to do with sometimes the limited dollars they have. And when they're limited dollars, it's even more difficult when you've got to spend in a place and follow a procedure for where the money has to go, a formula which doesn't relate to you at all. And I'm wondering, can we do a better job in terms of not a one-size-fits-all or close to what a one-size-fits-all process?
Yeah, we sure can, because as I mentioned before, we are dead last rigged every year in how we do that. Certainly, if we had an approach that would, at the very least, update the categories, update the weighting of the categories in our current one-size-fits-all approach so that it more accurately reflected what the needs were in each individual community, that would be a dramatic improvement. You've made the other dramatic improvement by dramatically increasing the funding that is distributed from the state. So, you know, in terms of the two things that are really needed for education aid, you're halfway there. But the fact of the matter is that trying to get to the individual needs of a community, it's why foundation aid is so fundamentally important because it's flexible funding. The other categorical funding, you've determined what the school must spend the money on, and so individual need within the district takes a backseat. The foundation aid formula allows them to address those individualized needs, and so that's why it's so very important. So accounting for the money, because the money is indeed huge, is very important. Allowing it to be spent according to the need of the district is also huge, because you have students who are from incredibly diverse circumstances coming into schools. Many are not ready to learn. Many have spent a long time now out of school and in an environment that, let's just say at the very least, is not conducive to learning in their home environment, and perhaps school is a much better environment for them to be in to do that learning. You've provided funding that should allow them to try and catch up and be ready. It's obviously, you know, there are so many state priorities that are valid, you know, and only one of them was put in our state constitution as being absolutely required. And so this is a vital effort that you're involved in, and you're right, trying to get to the individualized need of those students through the individualized categories that school districts have provided that money is imperative.
With something like a waiver appeal process where we can, the school districts say, "Look, here's the funding in this way," we really can't utilize that, or it's not something that's at the highest level of a need. Can we segue and move this over and appeal this process to use some funding that may not be what is needed, because all funding is needed, and get a waiver to say, "Can we use this in this particular place because there's a serious need here, and we're lacking funding there?" Would that be helpful?
That would be nirvana. But I think that we're a long procedural way from getting there. I think simply being relieved of some of the current requirements that are antiquated, that are duplicative, we tend to never take anything away once it's enacted. We simply layer it on what's already there over and over again and hope we can give enough money to allow everybody to comply with them all. You know, a systemic review of some of those requirements that school districts have to see whether or not they're still applicable, relevant, would certainly be warranted. I wish I had a dollar for every time one of you asked me, you know, "What are the state mandates that you don't want? You know, can you give me a list of those mandates and which ones you would want removed?" And 20 years ago, I suggested that we pick a time, five years in the future, that they all expire unless you folks have reenacted them and let them grandfather until they expire and then go forward. I think we'd end up with a lot more efficient and a lot more equitable and certainly a lot more cost-effective means of providing public education.
Now, what we're talking about is the words, "It's always been done that way," the worst words in the English lexicon. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, all of you. I would point out, and I think it's only fair to say, that as imperfect as foundation aid is, it is not a fixed amount. It does rely on factors that reflect change within districts. No question it's imperfect, and we've had many conversations about modifying it pre-COVID, but it does reflect, for example, change in English language learners, a change in special needs students, a change theoretically in population and average wealth. So it is imperfect, but it is not like it is fixed and that you can't use it. It's broadly applicable. But to Senator Tedesco's point, there's other streams that are very limited, and, you know, we look forward to working on flexibility. Today, we were focused, though, on providing billions, which I have to stress because it's never happened before, billions of dollars, and having really, I wouldn't say persuaded the prior governor, but forced the prior governor to allow to go directly to schools without being usurped by the executive. And those were tremendous victories. Everyone has noted that, but it comes, it does come with strings attached. We all know that. We want to know that we have done the right thing and that kids will ultimately benefit. So thank you for being here. Thank you for going down that path with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Senator Lou.
No question collectively, our best effort to date, and I've been at this a long time.
May I just offer one additional comment on the foundation aid? Getting more foundation aid, that was always the goal. Now, you know, the idea of changing the foundation aid formula, that will be a complicated process when we get to that point. And, you know, you should expect that perhaps some of your districts would do better in an updated foundation aid formula, and some of them may not do as well. So you'll have to contend with those school districts with any change in the formula that may come about.
That's what Save Harmless was built for. You folks have figured that one out already.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you all. Okay, last panel, patient group. New York State Association of School Psychologists, Beth Rizzi. New York State School Guidance Counselors Association, Robert Rotunda. New York State Network for Youth Success Executive Director, Trudy Morgan. Thank you, you very patient group, although it's not like a budget hearing where we go till midnight.
Is that our goal this year?
No, it's not, oh, no, no, it's not our goal this year. No, it is not. No, it is not. No, it won't be that way. Good afternoon, all, and thank you for being so patient and being here. I let you go in the order you wish.
Want me to go first? All right. I've been I've been assigned to go first.
I see that.
Okay. Good afternoon. I am Robert Rotunda, the Executive Director of the New York State School Counselor Association. For point of reference, there are about 7,700 certified school counselors employed in New York State. Thank you to Chair Mayor and Chair Lou and all the members of these committees and for your continued commitment to all children, their families, and our schools. NISC is grateful to be able to present on how foundation and AARP funds are being spent this year. And allowable and recommended use of AARP funds is to provide mental health services and supports through the implementation of evidence-based programs, full-service community schools, and the hiring of counselors. We've heard a lot about student mental health today. The purpose of today's hearing is to review how the school districts are spending foundation aids and AARP funds. To get some info, NISC sent surveys to district superintendents and school counselors to gather information regarding increased employment of school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, and school nurses. While these surveys do not provide scientific research findings, we have gathered some interesting and possible possible useful information. Superintendents from 44 counties responded to our survey, and counselors from 54 counties responded to our counselor survey. There were 151 superintendents and 243. Okay, sorry. There were 151 superintendents and 243 counselors who responded. The bottom line that we found is that districts are not hiring people. The survey items revealed at this point, and one of the survey items, the first survey item, was did your district add school counselors in 2021, 2022? 63, 61% of the superintendents said no. Counselor says 63% no. Did your district add school psychologists? Superintendent, 69% no. 75 of the, 75% of the counselors said no. Did your district add school social workers, 2021, 22? Superintendent, 56% said no. Counselors reported 62% no. And then for school nurses, 75% of the superintendents said no. School nurses were hired, and 82% of the counselors said no. School nurses were hired. Now, if you're a half-glass-full kind of person, like I am, you could say 25% of the districts hired nurses and 17% of the districts hired psychologists, and so on and so on. So you could look at it that way, too. There were some interesting comments from the superintendents as well as the counselors. Superintendent said, had the following comments, "We added a site-based mental health clinic and an excess liaison." Another superintendent said, "We need school counselors and psychologists desperately. However, we cannot find any in our region. Our schools need help in this area. Please." Four of them said that, actually. Again, someone said, "We were at, we were able to add these services." This is positive. "We were able to add these services because we had access to COVID relief fund. Thank goodness for the AARP funds. We could not have hired these nine people if we did not have the money." That was a superintendent from Suffolk County. Another commented, "These funds cannot, should not be used for non-sustainable expenses." And another responded, "We didn't ask about previous years when PPS staff were added." Counselors commented, "We're currently looking for more school psychologists. None are available in our area. Please send them our way." Another commented, "I wish school social workers were mandated at all levels. We do not have any in our school, and as school counselors, we are left to do much of the social worker role, and we struggle with community resources and the balancing of the need with regular school council responsibilities." Another commented, "We strongly believe the hire, that we need to hire even more elementary school counselors in each district. I think each school needs at least one, full-time, permanently, not just access to one." Another commented, "My district has no plans to use the money for staffing." Another commented, "I think there needs to be more guidance from," and I said, "on student to counselor ratio, as well as the difference between urban, rural, and suburban practice. At 250 to 1, it could look very different in these three areas." They did not use the money, our district did not use the money, as many admin excuses were, "Well, once it dries up in three years, how are we going to continue to pay for that extra person?" That's a quote. There needs to be real legislation and real measures in place.
I'm sorry, I did not understand the last sentence you said. There needs to be real legislation, what?
It said, "There needs to be real legislation and real measures in place," according to the quote. And finally, the last comment was, "Virtually all requests made to enhance student services in our district were denied, and they're very disheartened." So thanks very much for this opportunity to submit testimony on these important issues. We have found in preliminary surveys of superintendents and and school counselors that most districts have not added school counselors, psychologists, social workers, or school nurses to their staff this year. In order to get a better understanding of what services are provided, to whom and at what level, and where and where in the state, further research needs to be conducted as as plans are being implemented. We note that New York has some of the most comprehensive regulations regarding school counseling in the country. We feel that if these regulations were implemented with fidelity, and that if school counselors, psychologists, social workers, and nurses are looked on as a team providing necessary interventions, student outcomes would improve around the state. We look forward to a time when these services of all these professionals are fully funded for the benefit of all students because people make all the difference in delivery of these vital services. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to present this testimony. My Trudy, my name is Trudy Morgan, and I'm the Policy Director of the New York State Network for Youth Success. I am pleased to be testifying today on behalf of the network and also the New York State Community Schools Network. We are quite well-versed at this point at the many challenges that students have faced amid COVID, including extended periods of learning loss, wide academic and achievement gaps, and also experiencing significant trauma resulting from loss and grief amid the pandemic. With assistance of these issues and more, it is clear that students, families, and schools need broader community support to safely meet academic and social-emotional needs. I think Dave said it before, but it is going to take the village to empower the whole child. Through foundation aid and stimulus funds, school districts are provided with game-changing investments to reimagine every New York student's learning experience. The American Rescue Plan alone sets about $2.2 billion in funds to address learning loss. Here lies the opportunity. New York schools and districts can and should leverage the power of school-community partnerships. Strong collaboration with after-school partners and the utilization of the community school strategy are key to helping our young people not only return to normalcy, but also providing a meaningful and important pathway to accelerate their success. New York has already been a leader in expanding learning through school-community partnerships. These partnerships look like working in tandem with after-school programs to provide academic support in tutoring, social-emotional support, physical activity, mentoring, and other enrichment activities. They also look like utilizing the community school strategy, which organizes community resources to support student success by bringing together separate delivery systems that address students' needs. With the right resources in place, community schools increase access to medical and mental health care, expand learning opportunities through after-school and summer programs, and provide parent-family engagement to remove learning barriers. We know that after-school and other youth-serving organizations, cultural and health institutions, and other community-based organizations bring essential resources and expertise to schools, resources that could take the form of longstanding family relationships, teaching artists, culturally competent educators, health and social service connections, and many other kinds of expertise tailored to a particular school or community. And so we urge school districts to utilize after-school and summer programs by integrating these programs as essential elements for learning recovery and social-emotional support for students. Work with after-school partners to create, enhance, and implement high-quality after-school and summer enrichment programs. And utilize the community school strategy to address the social, emotional, and physical well-being of children and students. Invest in community schools coordinators to provide needs assessment and support for pooling resources and partnerships needed to establish and expand the community schools within schools and districts. And I would also like to echo what was already said before around transparency and accountability, and we urge the state to include measures to ensure that schools and districts are being held accountable and are providing transparency to all those involved, including community partners. New York is presented with a lifetime opportunity to implement and expand a strategy that not only would build following the loss perpetrated by various academic, emotional, and family support from the pandemic, but strengthen the infrastructure that is needed to sustain effective school partnerships as common practice moving forward. Leveraging after-school and the community school strategy can help guarantee this. The New York State Community Schools Network and the New York State Network for Youth Success stand ready to provide support and contribute as critical thought partners to support school districts in this endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morgan.
Good afternoon. My name is Beth Rizzi, and I'm a New York State Certified School Psychologist. I'm the current President of the New York Association of School Psychologists, and I also work in the Wappanhae Central School District, serving close to 2,000 students in the high school where I practice. Each day, I work with children, providing direct mental health services, conducting evaluations, responding to crises, and consulting with teachers and parents. School psychologists are uniquely trained in both education and psychology, and our work is important in the educational and emotional functioning and outcomes of our students, where we focus on both prevention and intervention. Our training includes not only expertise in assessment, but also in providing therapy to students and consultation with teachers and parents. All of these skills are necessary in providing comprehensive educational and mental health services to students, as well as collaborating with various stakeholders, both in and outside of schools. I want to thank Senators Mayor and Lou for the opportunity to provide some brief remarks on the use of the American Rescue Plan funding in schools. I also would like to thank Senator Mannion for his mention this morning in recognizing staffing shortages of school psychologists across New York State. I will focus my remarks specifically on the use of this funding to respond to the social and emotional needs of students. As has been mentioned several times today, millions of children across the state re-entered our schools this fall, many of whom faced challenges due to ongoing health, economic, and social consequences of the pandemic in which we are all living. As Senator Brooks mentioned earlier, mental health needs have always been there, but they are more apparent to all of us than ever before. Children have been uniquely impacted by the pandemic, having experienced this crisis during their most important periods of physical, social, and emotional development. Some have experienced the loss of loved ones, and many households with children have been particularly hard-hit by loss of income, food, housing insecurity, and disruptions in healthcare coverage, all of which impact health and well-being. Public health measures to reduce the spread of the disease have also led to disruptions or changes in children's social interactions, school experiences, and increased mental health challenges. Many of these effects have disproportionately affected low-income children and children of color, who have previously faced health and economic challenges even prior to the pandemic when compared to their peers. School psychologists are uniquely positioned to help school districts engage in needs assessments, to identify challenges to their school community, collaborate with administrators, teachers, and other mental health professionals, to plan effective evidence-based supports and provide direct mental health services to children, adolescents, and families. Niasp recently surveyed school psychologists across the state to assess implementation and use of funding through the American Rescue Plan. Senator Mayor, you've asked several questions today about community engagement. In terms of community engagement and outreach and planning for the use of the COVID relief funds, feedback from our survey indicated that many school districts did engage in extensive outreach to identify the impact of the pandemic and potential ideas for use of the COVID relief funds. Respondents indicated that districts engaged in surveying the community, hosting both virtual and live town hall meetings, or meetings in smaller groups with various stakeholders. It is apparent that some districts meaningfully engaged in a diverse and representative set. However, it is important to note that some of our respondents indicated that little or no knowledge regarding their district's engagement of the community to assess needs or develop a plan were transparent. It's difficult to generalize the experiences, but many of these respondents reported that their districts have historically lacked community engagement or stakeholder feedback in decision-making. The good news is that many school districts are using the funding to expand or enhance their mental health supports for students. Niasp was encouraged to receive feedback that districts were using AARP funds to expand and enhance mental health supports through a variety of measures, including additional staff, expanded services, and the purchasing of mental health resources such as evidence-based mental health curricula. Unfortunately, this was not a universal response. As you heard a few moments ago, we have heard from some surveyors that no new mental health supports have been implemented or new staff been initiated with limited planning and supports. This has unfortunately resulted in inefficient and ineffective practices. Niasp is also concerned about the trend of inconsistent use of federal COVID funds to address the social and emotional needs of students. Accountability on the part of schools for how they are using these funds and the impact of programs on students' social and emotional adjustment are vital components of any grant program. Niasp is encouraged by the general trend on how school districts are using the AARP funds. However, without specific accountability measures and progress monitoring tools, significant concerns exist regarding the inconsistent application of funds to support students' social and emotional needs. We are concerned that this funding stream will replicate similar programs in the past where well-resourced school districts will be able to expand and enhance mental health supports, while low-resourced districts will continue to struggle to meet basic social and emotional programming. We believe that school psychologists are an invaluable resource that have the potential to make significant contributions in the advancement of the state and intention and purpose of the AARP funding, and we urge the legislator, legislature, excuse me, to specifically identify school psychologists in all contexts as relates to the planning and implementation of AARP funds for the provision of children's mental health services. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you to all of you. I have questions for all of you. First place, Dr. Rotunda, I guess you're the most depressing report that we've had today. You know, everything was looking peachy till you showed your survey. And did your district add school counselors? Even the superintendents, no, 61, yes, 31. Did your district add psychologists? No, 69, yes, 25. Social workers, no, 56. Nurses, no, 75%. And then a range of comments. So you heard the testimony earlier today of including a superintendent's, recognizing school mental health was top of mind.
Yes.
I I see some of the comments, and I look forward to reading it more carefully. What is your answer to or a response to the reason why, based on your survey, there is so little use of this huge amount of money to hire the kind of people that, you know, may or may not, but certainly likely contribute to the health of of students?
I think there are a few reasons, and I'm sorry to make you sad at this point in the day.
It's okay.
It's not usually my effect on people.
It's real world here.
I think one of the things that happens when you survey people from a researcher's point of view is that people who who have something negative to say will sometimes answer the survey. That's that's a possibility. Another thing that might have happened was that some of this hasn't necessarily gone into effect. AARP funds are not in the door yet.
Correct.
And so maybe the maybe the plans that were due today, I guess, are going to include some of those personnel, and we did this, we did the survey like 10 days ago. So maybe the projection after after the plans are approved and so on will be better. I think that I think that school just started. School started three weeks ago.
Yes.
My grandkids told me last week was their first full week of school downstate where we live. And so there's a lot that's still in play. We talk, we we talk about how were the kids doing and so on and so on. I think what I wanted to leave today, the message today, is that it's a team effort. We need psychologists, we need social workers, we need school counselors, we need nurses. It's a team effort. It's not, it's not, we can replace one of these with one of those. I know that in some parts of the state, there are shortages of of psychologists and and social workers mostly. So that's an issue.
Oh, I appreciate that. I I think that we got the point of team effort today. That was quite clear. I appreciate that. Ms. Morgan, I have a question for you. You gave some good examples in your testimony of joint efforts with, between districts and communities for after-school, which has always been the way after-school has survived, unfortunately. I mean, to me, I happen to think it's an essential part of the school day. But did these ones you used as examples, Messina, Saranac Lake, Edward Knox, Binghamton University, Best South, which I guess is in Western New York in Buffalo, did they use ARP funding to enhance, or don't you know?
No, these are actually in response to COVID. So most of these examples are prior late December and also early this year. However, these are to show the example of how school committee partnerships work and can work as schools think further about how to engage community partners in this process.
Have you found that post-adoption of our budget with this additional money, that districts are, and I know for some of the districts I represent, they are very much interested in finding partners for after-school because they know their kids need the balance of the school day, and their parents are in a very challenging situation? Has that been your experience, that superintendents are more engaged with looking for after-school?
Yes, I would say it's, I think in fact, it's a little bit of a mixed bag in this approach. As a matter of fact, through the community schools network, we've actually been reaching out to many of the folks who presented testimony here today to think further about how we could be more intentional around bringing together best practices and really recommendations to help direct in this effort. There are some cases too, we've heard, you know, as I think it was talked about a little bit earlier, that since there were so many things for schools to consider at the beginning around graduation, exams, and other things, right at the beginning, there wasn't a lot of involvement with community partners. The other thing that I'll mention, and I know this was something that was talked about earlier, what we are hearing is that there's a little bit of a misalignment with some school districts and the vaccine mandate. So what we are hearing is that some schools and districts are requiring after-school partners who work in school buildings to be vaccinated without alternative for weekly testing. So these are some of the barriers that we are hearing annually at the point. And our hope is that as there's more clarity and there's more understanding around the utilization of these funds, it will be almost organic for us to, for schools and school districts everywhere to look at community partners as an integral part of this recovery process.
I take it you're talking about districts like the City of New York with the vaccine mandate, or some of the other, some of the limited districts with the school personnel must be vaccinated. They're implying that the after-school providers must be vaccinated as well, correct?
Actually, what we are hearing is that in some schools, the school personnel are getting the alternative testing, but the partners are not.
I understand. Okay. Thank you. That's a good point. Thank you for pointing that out. And lastly, on the issue of school psychologists, thank you for your suggestion to specifically identify, is it, your testimony is also sort of that generally speaking, there is an increased interest in having school psychologists, but does it translate into hiring? Do you know for yours?
It's a mixed bag, as the survey shows. There certainly have been some hires, and I think that there may be more, but we're also hearing, as you have all heard many times today, that there is the fear of the sun setting of the funding and what happens with those positions at that point in time. So there, I think that some districts are nervous to add staff and then potentially be afraid of needing to lay them off in the future.
No, I appreciate and understand that, but to Senator Jackson's point earlier, is there a value, or is there not some value with taking a job where you're going to provide benefit for the next two years and leave it to the legislature, which fights very hard to try to make sure these positions exist, rather than not using this money to do something that you certainly professionally agree is necessary for these kids?
In my opinion, absolutely yes.
I agree.
Yeah. As we said, it's a team effort, everyone together, to work together for the betterment of our children in New York State. So, yes.
Also, as Senator Jackson has said, you know, we live to fight another day here every year. We've fought a lot of years. It is not one and done for us, and who knows what the future brings, but we have to stay with our commitment to get full foundation aid for the next two years, but I appreciate that. Any other questions? Yes, Senator Tedesco.
Thank you so much for being here today and for your testimony, and for the work you do with our kids in our schools on the most important gift that we're going to have, and that's a great education. And we know they can't get an enhanced gift like that in education if they bring the schools some serious concerns and problems and variables that are not controlled within the school. And as counselors and psychologists, you deal with kids who have social, as you mentioned, emotional problems. You develop therapies. My question is, to start with, what role has, or do you think should, or do they not have a role at all, do parents have, in the processes you go to, to deal with those variables? And the variables I talk about in some instances are disruptive family structure, lack of resources, hunger and concern, coming to school with a growling stomach, the pandemic itself. And one other one in particular, which I'll wait to ask you about, but what's the role of the parent in the interactions and the therapies you provide? Because right now, what parents are hearing, you've got to get involved with your kids in your schools. You've got to help them come and help us with the curriculum, got to join the PTA, you got to raise money for the teams and the arts and the sports, because we were limited, a little bit better now. But we keep urging and asking and wanting parents to be more involved. They're an important cog that's being told by them, by our educational system and all of us, and I believe that's the case. No one cares more, no one loves more and wants them to do their best than their parents. So do they have a role with you when you're working on these issues with these children and trying to help them get through the emotional, psychological, and social problems they face?
So the very short answer to your question is, of course, absolutely. But the slightly longer answer would be that, as someone stated earlier today, children are not available for education unless their most basic needs are met, you know, starting with food, clothing, shelter, but then, of course, their social and emotional needs are secondary only to those most basic needs. And what I always say is that school and home have to work in partnership and in tandem with one another in all arenas, all of those that you've just mentioned, and mental health is the exact same thing. If we don't develop relationships and partnerships with the families with whom we work, we have no hope of reaching their children and enabling them to be successful.
How do you do that?
A variety of ways. And Google Meet and Zoom have, believe it or not, helped enormously because parents that were not available for face-to-face meetings previously due to work and other obligations can now do face-to-face meetings where they couldn't before. And of course, before, you know, phone calls, outreach, meetings, anything necessary is the honest answer to your question. But relationship building is truly the answer.
One variable I didn't mention, I saved to the end here, and that's the incidence of bullying in schools. Now, when I was in school, and Senator Jackson's a young man, he may not remember this, but we were bullied. We would never go home and tell our parents it took place because that was embarrassing. But the bullying usually stopped at the gates of the school. It does not stop at the gates of the school. It's 24/7, and it's less physical now, I believe, I truly believe that, and I believe the research has shown that, than emotional and psychological. They go home, they're demeaned on all these social media sites, and it has a profound impact on them. And I want to ask you a question. It's about a legislation that I passed in the Senate a couple of years ago. It's called Jacob's Law. You may know that according to the guidelines, if a child is being bullied in school, the administration has to contact the state education department, give them the incidents, when it took place, information about that. You know who is not mandated to be contacted? The parents of the children. The parent who is being bullied, or the child who's being bullied, and the child who's doing the bullying, parents. Now, when we ask all these parents to do all these things, come to school, develop the curriculum, Jacob Terrace killed himself. He was 14 years old. He never told his parents he was abused. The school never told his parents he was being bullied every day. It was constant. He took his life. Now, that's happened often. It's happened in New York City. It's happened in other parts of the state. And the bill I have is a pretty simple bill. And there's a few people in the room today. I'll ask anybody to raise your hand in this room if you don't want to know your child or your grandchild is having their head slammed into a locker every single day by a bully in the school. Raise your hand if you don't want to know that. There's no parent who doesn't want to know that. But yet, we're not required in school to give that information to the number-one guardian of the children who want to get a great education. What's your feeling about that?
I would only add that the schools I worked in, I worked in the middle schools for 25 years, and if something like that was happening in the school, we would call the parent for sure.
Yeah.
I don't know what's required by the law. It was just practice.
That's nice that your school does that. But there's a multitude of schools who don't do that. Jacob Terrace School is an example. It's not required. My question is, should it be required?
And my short answer is sure. Yeah, it should be required. It should be required, yes.
Agreed.
Well, if you can lobby for that bill, we'd love to have you do it. Because there but for the grace of God go any of us. And thank you so much for the service you provide. I have a little experience in that. I was a guidance counselor for five years myself, as well as an educator. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tedesco. Senator Oberacher.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you again. Can you hear me? There we go.
Now we're good.
Yeah, thank you. So as a former town supervisor working in budgets, one of the areas that I would allocate monies for and consistently be asked about was maintenance, because there wasn't a metric to really look at what our return on investment is. So in other words, you know, I would allocate so much for this, and people would say, well, we could always take from that. And as a businessman myself, I would always say, you know, you have to have maintenance. Is this maybe a correct analogy? I mean, what you are doing now in light of where we are coming out of COVID is maintenance. I mean, we're trying to use that, right, as, so the issue becomes in some districts and potentially here is the metric at which we measure the success. Am I, is that like, is that like the, kind of the crux of what we're dealing with here? Because then with that, I mean, if we could say, we saved whatever number of, or headed off potential issues, to come back and then ask for funding for that position is a no-brainer. Am I, is it kind of, am I right with that?
I understand your question. I once had a superintendent tell me, can you prove that we'll have one less suicide if I hire a counselor? And he said, you can't prove a negative. You can't prove that. One of the things that's really interesting, and it's in our written testimony, is what's required in state regulations regarding school counseling programs. And one of the things that's required is that every kid K-12 have access to a school counselor. Now, that's not the case right now. Okay? It's pretty much the case in secondary schools, as we've known for years, but not in elementary yet. The other thing that's required in grade six through 12 is an annual review with a counselor, talking to the kid at least once a year about his social, emotional, his career plans, how he's doing academically. Most counselors meet with the kids many more times than that, but one formal assessment that's kept track of every year. And as we said earlier, we work as a team. So if I find some issues with one of my students, I might consult with the psychologist or social worker or the school nurse to find out what's going on. And so the other things that are required in the state regulations are that the district has a comprehensive school guidance plan, and that it's posted on their websites, that there's a report every year of the goals of that to the school boards, a formal report of that at the end of the year of whether they met their goals or not. It also requires an advisory committee of stakeholders, teachers, parents, business people from the community, to help, you know, structure the guidance program for the year. So there's a lot of accountability pieces built in. As I said, as I said somewhere, the regulations have been in effect since 2019. Just, you know, three or four months before the pandemic hit, the new regulations went into effect. And so a lot of districts are, in fact, they didn't go into effect until September 2020 in New York City. And so a lot of districts are still struggling, not struggling, but they're still putting them together with pandemic to help along. And so there's a lot of that, there's a lot of that going on. But if they're in place with fidelity, there's a lot of research, and it's in the packet, there's a lot of research that proves comprehensive school counseling programs work and create better outcomes, and that's around the country.
Thank you. And the other part that has been sort of troublesome, I guess, with me is the fact that, again, in the rural districts that I represent, that there is a need, and we're not fulfilling it with just a basic school nurse as well. I was just out at one of, out at Gerbertsville Mount Upton School, and they had just recently put in their rural healthcare part of the school. I toured it. It was absolutely amazing. I mean, where they can get, you know, the medical, the dental, I mean, you know, suit and up. Again, I go back to, there's something we can measure, right? The number of kids that came in. So is it, could it also be the potential for the number of kids that are being seen? If they're being seen, they have to, you have to have an impact. I mean, you know, my coach in high school acted probably as much as my psychologist in my sounding board back then, because we didn't have, we did not have that, you know? And so it just, to me, it's a no-brainer. I mean, how can we sit back here and say, you know, that you don't have an impact, or you don't have a positive impact for something like that in light of where we are? So anyway, I'm just, I want to thank you for what you do because it is a Herculean effort with what you do. And I hope that down the road, we can all come back to that same kind of a mentality of saying, you know what? Sometimes it's something we can't put a number to or put a metric to that has value. So anyway, thank you.
I would liken it somewhat to take it one step further, go beyond the word maintenance, as you said, and call it preventative maintenance. And you get the oil changed in your car so that your engine doesn't seize.
Perfect.
School districts hire pupil personnel services, whether it be school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, school nurses, community outreach projects, to ensure that the children are maintained and available for their education so that they can have positive outcomes.
Great example. Thank you.
Well said.
And Senator, to your question, I'd actually like to say two things quickly. First one is we know that community schools work. Actually, the return on investment in investing in a coordinator is a dollar to $7. And actually, in some communities within New York State, we've seen up to $11. There is extensive research I'm happy to share with you, both going after school and community schools, that it works very well. And, you know, we've been talking a lot too about the sustainability of these funds, and one of the things we like to talk about is because community schools pool together different systems, bring together varying delivery systems to help bring services to students, oftentimes they are leveraging funds from several places and bringing that together. And so as we talk about sustainability, it helps to take away all the sunk-in cost because there is a strategy to help address all needs of students. And so one of the things we have been talking about is the community school strategy is actually a cost-effective strategy to ensure that students are being taken care of.
Is there a number, and excuse me if it's in one of the reports, because I don't remember seeing, so is there a number that is effectively given to, for a psychologist to administer to?
Ratio. Ratio?
Yes, thank you.
The National Association of School Psychologists recommends a ratio of one school psychologist for every 500 students.
That's for psychologist?
That's the psychologist.
Counselors, our National Association recommends 250 to 1.
250.
250 to 1.
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, and thank you for thinking of ways to ensure that the Well, thank you all, and thank you for thinking of ways to ensure that the money goes to what we intended it to go to, which is a lot of what you all do, and to creative uses of partnerships, particularly in the after-school and other places where we're going to have to do that. It's not a, you know, I appreciate people say there's not enough money, but there was a lot of money, and we're starting with the premise, there's a lot of money, not there isn't enough money, and let's make it work. So I appreciate you all being in that fight with us. I want to thank all the witnesses today for this hearing. I think we did learn quite a bit, most of it quite in the positive direction. No. Truth is good, it's fine, but I think overall, there's a sense of people are working together under very challenging circumstances to find some solutions to help our kids, and so thank you to all of you. Special thanks to the staff, Georgia Shudum, my committee director, Amanda Goodkin, for the council, Lisa, I'm sorry, Lisa, I didn't acknowledge you, from Senator Lou's staff, and Sophia Berry from my staff, and Andy Booter from my staff, and
Monica Salati.
Oh, yes. From our finance team on education. I know, I know, I know. And all of our member staff, really, who are here, because during COVID, just very frankly, it's difficult to put these hearings together in person. It really relies on member staff, so I'm very, very appreciative of everyone helping, helping everybody make sure it happens. Thank you all.
Madam Chair, can you also note that we, a lot of people have asked for these hearings on Zoom, and under current law, we're not able to have these by Zoom, which is why we must have them in person. That may change in the future, but as of now, state law does not allow us to have these public hearings by Zoom.
Thank you, thank you. Anything I should add?
Thank you, yes.
Thank you to my colleagues, thank you.